Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a subsection 18 in the governor's March 15, 2020 orders imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place as the meeting of the Hubbardson Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for more participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at www.hubbardsonma.us. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that that public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Great, thanks. So I'll call a meeting to order. We have actually all of our members here tonight. I guess I'm supposed to introduce them. I'm Alice Livedall, Chair. Members here are Bill Holmans, Christopher Monroe, Francois Steiger, and John Demalia. So I call a meeting to order. We do allow public comments. We also take public comments again if you're here for a specific public hearing. So I guess I want to ask, is there, when we ask you to keep, you know, keep comments brief, we get a big agenda, but we're interested in what the public has to say. Are there any members of the public there that are not here related to one of the hearings, Mallory?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one hand up. I have a whole. All right. Hold on one second, Laurel. Okay. All right. You should be able to speak.
Right.
Introduce yourself.
Um, yeah, I'm one of the abutters to Nate's land, and so I just wanted to talk about the tree that is slated to come down.
That is our first hearing. Can you give me just one second and we'll read the introduction to that?
Of course.
Mallory, we'll go right back to you. Okay, so Mallory, you want to read the public? These are requirements of our law. That you announce a public hearing in a scenic tree, a scenic road bylaw is, requires a public hearing. So Mallory, you want to read that lead in?
So pursuant to provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Subsection 15c, the Hubbardson Planning Board will hold a public hearing on 5/20/21 at 6:30 via Zoom under scenic road application removal of one six inch DHB sugar maple at the right of pole 31 for installation of a driveway located at map and parcel oh eight six five forty Hillville Road. This property is owned by Nathan Silky. Please may be viewed at the planning board office during regular business hours.
Okay, so do we also have Nathan Silky here? Oops, Mallory, can you hear me?
Can I don't see him on here.
Okay, then we will. We will let Laura Nelson. I didn't get your last, your hyphenated name, the second half.
Yeah, it's Kuciara, but I go by Nelson because Kuciara is too confusing.
Laura Nelson, what would you like to say?
I actually don't have any problem with Nate cutting down that tree. But there is like 10 feet away from that tree. There is a dead tree that is on his property line and my property line. And that tree is consistently dropping branches on my little shed that I built for, from all of my, my garbage cans. You know, I want to keep them protected and not out in the road. And so I was wondering if maybe when the town is there to take down that tree for Nate's driveway, if it will be possible for them to also take down this totally dead tree that's just falling down piece by piece on my property.
Is the tree that's being taken down though by a private contractor or by the town?
By their contractor usually.
By the contractor, it's not by the town. I think, um, I think it is the, so is this tree that's dead in the right of way? Or is it on right in between your properties?
It's right on the line. It's like halfway on our property line is a stone wall.
Yep.
And the tree is like built into the stone wall. And so it's, yeah.
Stone wall.
Yeah, but it's overhanging my property and it keeps dropping all these branches on my property, on my fence, on the little garbage house, all the stuff. And so I was just hoping that maybe we could whack it down at the same time with the other trees coming down.
Well, the process for a dead tree is a little bit different. I don't think you have to go through the whole scenic road stuff.
Right.
Oh, I would say ask the town and also ask them, since it's in the right of way, if it's, if the, you know, it's all growing on the border. If they will take it down.
Oh, okay.
But if they won't, or they say, yeah, but we won't get to it for five years. You know, being Hubbardson, see if you can get permission to take it down. I don't think that would take us, if it's truly dead, I don't think it would take a scenic road hearing.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I think Bill has his hand up.
Yeah, Bill?
There we go. It's not in the right of way. It's on the common property line between the two. It's, it's offset from the road by 15 or 20 feet.
Okay, so it wouldn't even be covered by the scenic road?
No, it wouldn't.
Bylaw. Okay, all right. Well, Bill, by the way, Laurel is our our advisor on the board. He's professional. He knows the town very well. So he says it's not in the right of way. You can trust him. It's not, it's not in the right of way. So it's not covered by the scenic road.
Okay.
So you can just make arrangements to take it down and the town will not take it down if that's the case.
Okay, well, as long as I'm not violating anybody's rules, that's kind of, that's okay, too. So that's good.
This would be the only rule you'd be violating and you don't violate if it's not actually in the, in the wall. I mean, in the right of way.
Good, good. Okay.
Alice, Bill Holmans, you could also probably ask your neighbors. He's got to take that other tree down. Maybe they could work something out with the contractor doing the work there just to help her out at the same time.
Yeah, I would definitely do that. It'd save me money, I would think.
Yeah.
That would be okay. All right. Well, thanks for coming.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thank you.
We actually have to vote, but I don't see any reason why we wouldn't vote. So you can stick around if you want. Is there anybody on the board? Mallory, you want to, you, I know you have a little more information on this tree. You want to explain the one that's the subject?
Yeah, actually, all I got from Jeff is that he went out, he looked at all the trees and there was this only one 36 inch DHB sugar maple at the right of pole 31. He had no issues with that.
Okay. How many inches did you say?
Ah, 36, I think it was.
Oh, that's a round?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So if, then of course Jeff is our tree warden and it is, it is allowed to do it for a driveway. So is there any objection from anybody on the board? Are you ready to vote on approving the scenic road tree removal? Hearing no comments. Somebody want to start off the voting to approve?
Bill's waving his fingers.
That's sorry. The, the action items for the agenda says it's a six inch diameter breast height sugar maple. Yeah, it is. It is in fact a 36 inch.
36, correct.
It's still diameter, right?
Yeah, DBH is diameter breast height, which is roughly four feet, four and a half feet.
Okay, so it's probably more like a foot in diameter.
No, it's 36 inches in diameter.
In diameter, not in circumference.
It's a big tree.
It's a big tree.
It's not six inches, you know?
Okay, no, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't have the applicant here. Was there any reason that anybody said that particular one, I mean, it's a driveway, is it? That is needed for? Is it a new lot?
It's going to be.
It's undeveloped lot. I live on Hillville, so I know it. It's an undeveloped lot and it's kind of just offset from the center of the lot and it's a narrow access strip. So, yeah, it needs to come out if they're going to put a driveway.
Okay.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay.
Francois, yeah?
Madam Chair, this was, uh, this was discussed back in the March timeframe when the applicant came in. And they, they brought in the paperwork for the, for a driveway. As a matter of fact, in the minutes, which we I think have skipped right now for that month, they actually submitted a request as a as an applicant for the, for the, for us to be able to, to allow them to open up a driveway there.
Was that part of an A and R?
No, it was not an A and R. It was a, let me double check here. One moment, please.
So why do we not proceed at that point in time? That's I guess my question.
No, no, at that point in time, I think this, this particular tree was not involved in the, in the applicant's, this was a scenic road application driveway permit.
Okay.
That indicated a number of trees. This particular tree was not included amongst those. I think they may have had to re, they may have had to look at this here and indicate that this particular tree was also must have been included, should have been included.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So they submitted a new application, but it's reasonable. At least Bill thinks it's, would need to come down and he's, and we do have a plan, at least of where it is, because I was wondering why they didn't submit another plan. I'm, I'm willing to approve it, but if anybody else has objections, I'm also willing to ask the petitioner to submit something else or clarifications or whatever. Anybody want anything more?
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
John Demalia, seconds.
Okay, shall we go ahead and vote, starting with John, maybe?
John Demalia, aye.
Livedall, aye.
Monroe, aye.
Monsieur Steiger, aye.
Okay, it passes. So you'll get that decision out, right? Thanks, Mallory. I skipped minutes and I don't want to skip minutes, so let's go back and do the minutes next. There are corrections in this, these minutes, a couple of them I pointed out. Maybe you guys have some too. These are minutes from the March 18, 2021 meeting. And my corrections are page. Pages aren't numbered. Well, that's annoying. One.
There's only three pages. I'm sorry. There's a few more pages. I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, page four, twice. First time on page four, it says, Livedall asked for a vote to accept the fee, the consultant fee of $67,000.
Correct.
He didn't pay bill $67,000. So that needs to be $67,000. Okay, and then on the next page, it starts out, fourth line from the top. On, this is relating to the BHB gravel pit testing. It says on ground testing to cost $68,000 for labor and expenses of 7,700. Mallory, check it, but I think she already has checked it and it's 6,800, not 68,000. And then moving down that page. You see the line that begins, Mr. Steiger gave a summary of a draft. It should be battery energy storage bylaw posted in the documents. You could make that correction. And then the following line says, Ms. Livedall asked if these, you should put battery energy storage projects, insert that, were subject to pilot programs. Meaning do we, if it, do we get, town get money from the amount stored? Was my question. I know, I remember asking that question. So if you can fix that, and then the next line it says, Mr. Murray stated that the, we should put solar bylaw should incorporate it instead of better battery energy storage system. And the regulation needs it. Yeah, okay. If you make those. And then also the last line, Christopher says, Mr. Monroe suggested looking into adding small residential units. If you could put a carrot in there, small battery energy storage units.
Sure.
Residential, leave residential. That was his question.
Okay.
Okay, and I think.
And I did talk to David and I am taking over minutes again.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Um, now there's one other thing. Oh, I'm sorry too, but you know, it should make sense, right? So second to the last page says, fourth paragraph. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Livedall asked about revisions. My revisions to the marijuana bylaw and the alternate member requirement. It wasn't the marijuana bylaw though. It was it was just revisions and corrections that we did. Oh, I guess we did do one, maybe one to the marijuana bylaw.
Correct, it was a moratorium.
Yes, okay, wait a minute, maybe that makes sense. Revisions to the marijuana, the alternate member requirement.
Madam Chair, I think what we need to do here is first of all, spell marijuana correctly. And, and, and the second thing is, is to indicate that this is really the revisions basically to the marijuana moratorium bylaw. Which still is in the, in, in our bylaw and really I think needs to be removed.
Right, so, okay, the revisions I would put in there that were already made. Marijuana bylaw and all that. And also, well, Mallory, at some point we need to have new printouts of the bylaws for everybody when we start the new year with all the changes and updates. Okay, and.
As, as well as posting them on the website, please.
Yes.
Yeah, everything that's fixed. And this was actually an error of mine, which I confess, but it is wrong and we should fix it. It says next two lines down, Ms. Livedall dated, updated the board that the 5,244,000 reconstruction project will move forward in the summer of, it should be 2020, not 2021. Okay, and then.
Pardon me ma'am, Madam Chair, but I mean, this, this, this took place in, on this year. If it will move forward, it has to move forward in the present year or in the future, but not in the past, right?
Did you mean 2022?
The trouble is, I actually, I miss, I don't know. Maybe you could just put a note corrected. It should be 2022. They're not actually going to do the paving until next.
22. You said 2020, that's why I was confused.
Oh, 2022, 2022, right. Okay, so although that's, that's all the corrections I have.
I have some corrections when you're done.
Take it away.
First page, very bottom, it says, first order of business scenic road application, Jeffrey and Nancy Dennis. I think we need to include their driveway permit just to basically indicate that this really was a driveway permit under the scenic road by application.
Okay.
Second page. I think it's the third line. It says, this parcel is 9.72 acres was not included in there. Acres needs to be included so as to define what it is that 9.72 was with a 5, 653 foot, feet of frontage. Okay. Little bit further down again, next order of business scenic road application, East Quabon Land Trust, Henry Grove. I'd like to include it there, the fact that this is a temporary driveway application also. It's not the scenic road application, but rather it's a, under the scenic road application, a temporary drive application.
Great, somebody's actually put these in here, I guess.
I did.
Yeah, that's good. I see.
Highlighted is.
I didn't know where they came from, but we'll definitely accept those, I think. Yeah, you had, you had caught some of the good numbers too. Okay.
Correct. I think that there's another, or immediately thereafter, there's a Miss Livedall asked to close the public hearing. I think that particular section there or that particular line needs to move down under, just after Mr. Holmans made the motion to approve, because this should be something that happens. The hearing is closed after the vote, right?
Um.
Or did we close the hearing before we voted?
How is that supposed to work? I think you close, you close the hearing because you're not hearing anything more and then take the vote. Is that right, Bill?
No, you vote to close the hearing.
You vote after you voted?
Yeah.
No, you, you, you actually take a vote to close the hearing.
Right, and then you vote on.
Did we vote on the issue?
Vote on whatever the most, the action is.
Okay.
Okay, my apologies. Then I was corrected. Then, one, two, three. Fourth page, very top. Please, if you would be so kind, just spell my name correctly, my last name correctly, S T E I, not I E. And a little bit further down, I have a question because there is a note here that says, the Mr. Schmidt commented that the electricity to the trailer falls under the jurisdiction of the building department. Yet I think what we were discussing at that point in time was I think 56. I have to say, this is very confusing. Anyway, under.
Well, yeah, that would be, that should be relating to who, I don't know what the fee agreement was though, probably was all related to 60, 69 and not 56. I don't know.
I, I, I think that needs to be reviewed and determined where that, where that particular paragraph comes in.
Well, certainly the electricity issue was raised with respect to.
I understand. It's just a similarity of where it actually takes place. And then there is one more spot where $67,000 fee, a little bit further up, it says, Miss Livedall asked if the application, if the applicant was satisfied with the $67,000 fee. That should also be 6,700.
Yeah, she's got that one.
Well, there's two places where we have 6,700.
Yeah, we got both of those.
Gotcha. Very good. That is it on my end. Thank you.
Oh, I see, I see. Mallory did catch the other one. Okay, so, um, motion to accept the minutes is amended?
I'll make that motion, John.
Second motion, Monsieur Steiger.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Livedall, aye. Okay, is that everybody? Okay, thank you. All right, we now need to enter into our second public hearing of the evening. So, which is sort of the main event here. Mallory, would you like to read the introduction?
In accordance with provisions of Mass General Law and Hubbardson zoning bylaw, Article 22, the Hubbardson Planning Board shall continue a public hearing originally opened Thursday, April 15, 2021 at 6:30 PM. As provided in the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a subsection 18, the planning board shall meet via virtual means Zoom to consider the special permit slash site plan application for Damon Schmidt, Royal Sun Farm for Recreation Marijuana Cultivation. The subject property 69 Gardner Road Assessor's Map, five parcel 153, consisting of 19.3 acres is located, located within the commercial slash slash agricultural district. This is a split zone to parcel. Damon, who do you have here with you that you want me to promote?
I believe Joe Connors.
I got him. I got Mitch. And Tom Bracco did state, Alice, that he has a letter to read.
Okay, and do we have other people waiting to speak?
I don't know if anyone else is here to speak on the matter. Maya Savitney and Tom.
Okay, um, so I'll call this public hearing to order and give the public a chance to speak first. Because it is a continued hearing. So we don't need to, I think, go through a lengthy introduction. Tom Bracco, you want to address the board?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to read a letter that I'm going to be presenting to the board and to the Cannabis Commission. That would be okay. It's about, takes me three minutes to read it.
You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, could I just ask Madam Chairman too, that I could actually get through this while being interrupted?
Yes, please give Tom, everybody that courtesy. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Dear members of the board, I am a direct devoted to the proposed marijuana facility at 89 Gardner Road in Hubbardson. As a member of the planning board in 2018, I wrote the Hubbardson Marijuana Bylaw and I feel that is, I have a responsibility to the residents of Hubbardson to express my many concerns about the proposed project at 69 Gardner Road. The intent of the bylaw was to allow tier one and tier two outdoor cultivation of marijuana in a residential district. It did not allow manufacturing, processing, growing more than 10,000 square feet. These activities and all other related to marijuana business are only allowed in the commercial district. When I presented the proposal to bylaw to the town meeting for approval, I told residents it relied heavily on this CCC regulations and the Hubbardson zoning, zoning bylaw and special permit process. This, these are the current concerns that I have for the project as listed below. The community outreach meeting held on January 6, 2020 does not reflect the current proposal. The proposal that was presented by Mr. Schmidt from Royal Sun Farms and is not the same as the current proposal that was submitted to the town and CCC by Royal Sun Farms. The, the proposal presented at the meeting for 69 Gardner Road included a 50,000 square foot building for manufacturing outdoor growing and 20 to 35 employees. Mr. Smith acknowledged at the, at the meeting that the 69 Gardner Road site had a lot of wetlands. He said that outdoor growing would be done at 56 Gardner Road, not 69 Gardner Road. According to the meeting minutes and the video of the meeting that I have review, I, I was left the impression that 69 Gardner Road project would be a building with 25 to 30 employees and that the site was wet, wetlands, but it had a perk test. There was no mention of outdoor growing, growing in a residential zone, outdoor trailers, generators, power, no bathrooms, facilities for building. There's no bathroom facilities and the employee of building a 600 foot driveway, 12 feet wide. I do not feel that the community outreach meeting held on January 6 reflects the current proposal at 69 Gardner Roads. Zoning issue one that I have, the Hubbardson bylaw allows outdoor cultivation tier one and two residence, residential. It does not allow any other marijuana facility in a residential zone. All other marijuana activities have to be in a commercial zones. The current proposal by, to the CCC by Royal Sun Farm is for a tier four or five. Some of the activity will occur in the residential zone. The intent of the current bylaw was to allow small farmers access to the marijuana business, not to expand large operations into residential zones. I do not believe the planning board has the legal authority to approve any activity in a commercial, for a commercial marijuana business in a residential district. Zoning issue two, section three, chapter 40a, Mass General Law says marijuana is a commercial business and does not have the zoning exemptions for agricultural business. Royal Sun Farms claims that they should be designated as agricultural business and therefore should not be allowed to operate a residential zone. This may be true for DEP and DCR regulations, but it's not true for zoning per Mass General Law. The proposal by Royal Sun Farms and CCC for tier four or tier five, which for the Hubbardson bylaw is only allowed in commercial districts. Zoning issue three, last one. Why would the planning board allow any new commercial business to be approved in Hubbardson without any infrastructure in place? Royal Sun's Farms proposing to operate a multimillion dollar business, commercial business with portable trailers, portable generators, portable toilets. This is not a farm business per Mass General Law. It's a commercial business. This sets a very dangerous precedent. I own 32 acres across the street from the project with a 100, with a wet, with 100 feet from the road. Would the planning board allow me to operate a used car business, a manufacturing business, a fire rags business, or any other type of business, work out of a trailer without building zoning approval, parking lots, toilets? Is that what the planning board wants for the future of the town? Security. The police chief has told me, told me when I was writing the bylaw, he did not want a marijuana facility up a long dark road with one way out. It would put his offices at risk answering the call. The chief also wanted the marijuana facilities on Main Road so they could keep an eye on it. These statements are, are what drove the decision to allow marijuana facility only in the commercial district. The Royal Sun Farm proposal has an 800 foot driveway and all has an eight foot fence with razor wire on top. So one would assume that the facility would likely attract crime almost. At a meeting, community meeting, Mr. Schmidt stated that he needs five to seven workers per 10,000 square feet of growing area. This current proposal was for 50,000 square feet of growing area, which would require 20 to 35 employees, according to Mr. Schmidt. And consequently, 20 to 35 parking spaces. His current proposal includes nine parking spaces, which is the maximum amount that he could have without doing extra site work. How many employees is he actually going to have? When I presented the marijuana bylaw to the town, I asked the people of Hubbardson to trust the planning board and the Cannabis Commission that they would only allow marijuana businesses that would conform to the Hubbardson bylaws and the CCC rules. I do not believe this project does that. I asked the planning board to vote against the current proposal for Jack project at 69 Gardner Road. If Royal's Farms wants to propose another proposal, he needs to start over and conform to our bylaws. I asked the Cannabis Control Commission to reject this proposed facility until the applicant has another community outreach meeting that is based on a real proposal to the town of Hubbardson and that the proposed that is based on a real proposal to the town of Hubbardston and that the proposed con- conforms to the town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws and is approved by the town. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bracco. I've dotted some of those down, uh, your, your concerns down. And I think I should give, um, the petitioner a chance to exp- um, to respond to some of those, some of those points. But I also want to move into what we need to consider tonight. So is there anything, Damon, any you would, you'd like to address? Do you?
Yeah, I'll get into it really quick. Um, I don't want to get too much into this. I mean, the C C C has approved our application already. We're going to be holding a public community outreach meeting in a couple of weeks, we hope. You've already been talking to the, uh, planning board about it. So we could, uh, we could just hold another meeting, but it wouldn't slow down our licensing. Um, you know, I think we're very open about, uh, what we were doing, uh, with the planning board. We're open about a year ago. Uh, what we told the planning board we were going to do. Uh, we have a site plan. I think six or nine months ago, when we came to the planning board, we showed you exactly what we were planning on doing. Uh, so I think we've been pretty open with the public about what we're doing. The town's lawyer, Hubbardson's town lawyer, has already solved, uh, this question about a tier one and a tier two in the residential, as well as what we're doing in commercial. So the town's lawyer has already spoken to that. Uh, so I don't think we need to speak about that any further. I mean, I do have my lawyer on the phone. He could probably, you know, talk a whole bunch about what Massachusetts general law says. But all it really says is that you can't use marijuana as an agricultural exemption. Um, so I think we're, we're pretty good, but, you know, we can take this, you know, I, I can call Tom or we, we can try to hold another meeting, but it's not going to slow down our license. So I asked the, the board just to, to vote yes tonight and let us move on.
Uh, Damon, tell me you're holding another community outreach meeting. Explain that when hearing.
Oh yeah, so we, uh, you know, we came to the, uh, the select board a little while ago and, you know, we told them that, uh, you know, we possibly wanted to hold another meeting, uh, and then, you know, they had, uh, basically said that we were going to hold off for a little bit. So we might be holding another one next year. Official year in, in June or July, I guess.
About this project?
No, another one, another one.
Okay, because I did it, I did attend that community outreach hearing.
Yeah.
And I do think that was what was represented.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing like what you're proposing. I kind of agree with that.
Yeah, so I mean, we can, we can hold another one if we need to, but we were going to hold another one, um, you know, for phase two. Of the plan, so.
I will, I, it's not my decision to make, but it is, I'll put that on my, the, the board list. It does seem to me that, you know, we, you have a community outreach meeting where anybody can come. And then when you get into the special permits, the only people, I mean, yeah, there's a published notice on the paper. It's posted on a board, but the only people really invited to participate or that get into the nitty gritty are the butters.
Yep.
So it, 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 you know, it may be, that may be a point worth considering is that the community outreach should reach the huge, you know, should really reach the community and be honest about what's proposed. And I know this evolved in ways that you didn't foresee at that time. So I leave it as an open, I leave it as an open question. I think the other issue we have is it's now been ninety days, seventy-seven days out of the ninety rather, since you filed your application.
Yep.
So that means that puts the deadline, unless we agree to further extensions at June second. And I had really hoped that we would be much further along in the negotiation than we are. So I'm going to go through these points, but I need to, we need to decide at the end whether you're going to.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like a vote tonight. I, I know where you're going. So if we don't have a vote tonight, I mean, we need to move forward. I mean, Hubbardson's going to lose, I'll be honest with you, you're going to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's going to be billions of dollars that goes missing. Um, and, you know, we've been going through this for a year. So it's, I'd like to get the vote tonight. I mean, our, our plans haven't changed. You know, our, our plans that we've been presenting for the last couple of months are basically the same. And I, I think.
That there's, you know, we put a deadline to try to resolve this and have a draft in our hand a week ago. And there was stuff coming in hours ago, once again.
Well, you know, the last, last speech from Mitch, I mean, you know, Bill kept going back and forth and.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to hold a vote tonight because I think you're within your rights to ask that, but I'm not sure how it will go. And there are things that we need to discuss.
Oh, yeah.
Issues that are not resolved.
Definitely, which hopefully resolves tonight and have a vote.
Alice, you also have a public comment from the Savignes as well, before we get into it.
Okay, I didn't know they were there, so I'm going to let them speak. You want to put them in and have them introduce themselves?
They should be in, it looks like.
Can you hear me?
There you go, we go.
Alright, so this is Gordon Savigny, uh, talking. Um, I went to that public, public hearing. And basically, what was told to the public is this is happening and you're just being informed what's happening. The public has had no real recourse or ability to state their concerns. I have a lot of concerns being the next door neighbor where everything's going to be happening. Write down, you know, uh, water levels. Uh, I have two wells on my property that are close to the, this site. And one's a shallow well, one's a, an artisan well. We run the shallow well because it has better tasting drinking water. Uh, then in the summertime, we're forced to switch over to the, uh, artisan well. Uh, concerned about, you know, water pollutants, uh, concerned about air pollutants. Also in noise pollution. I mean, uh, last week you had people over there. I, I could hear every conversation that's going on with my windows open. And you had some pretty filthy contractors over there swearing like crazy about something. Yelling and screaming. I had no idea what was going on, but it was like you were sitting in my kitchen as we were listening to it with my, uh, grandkids. Which wasn't too appreciated. But, um, I still have areas concerned about safety around my property. I've asked over and over again, what's going to happen? Cause I have people that walking through that never been there before. So I've tried getting hold of somebody because they won't allow security plans to be known, but I want to know what's going to be done to protect the, the surrounding area. So, and i- it's a sliding scale. Everything, it started off as a fifty thousand square foot greenhouse with fifty thousand gallons of water a day that's going to be used, and it just keeps changing. There's no solid number and no solid information. I'm not a propos- opposed to something that's set and, set and done the right way, but when things changed, it, it's a little bit concerning because what said is supposed to happen doesn't happen.
Tell me a little bit about your, the, the well you're concerned about.
Um, I have a, a twenty-five foot dug well right near the, the property. There's water that runs through in between the two fields, so. That is an underground spring that runs out from another piece of property and comes down in between the fields.
And what about your?
Which, which drains off, so my, my groundwater pulls up, basically pulls out of that aquifer that comes, that's running on, on the ground.
And your deeper well?
If well is.
Is how deep?
Is four hundred and eighty feet deep with my wellhead set at four sixty, which I only get five gallons a minute. Uh, but because I have a, a big reserve, I was able to pass for the bank and the town.
Okay, alright, we'll take your consider, your thoughts into consideration as we deliberate here. Thank you. Something else?
Yeah, well, I was concerned about the fertilization and of the, you know, things getting into the groundwater.
Fertilization used for the crops.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I've dotted down some of those concerns and, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna progress to answer to, um, unless there's another member of the public, to some of the questions we would have to answer in order to be able to either, you know, to have a vote tonight. There's just things we don't know. So I'm gonna, I'm going to proceed to go through the questions that, that I've sorted through the material and I've come up with that I believe we need to solve tonight in order to get to the point of a vote. So thank you, and, um, you're welcome to stay, stay with us. And at the end of the hearing, I always let, um, a second round of speakers speak, so. Alright, unless the board has any objections, I want to work through this list because we may be at a point where we're going to have to vote tonight and we cannot vote without determining these issues. So the first issue, um, is do we want, we have an option to accept town council's opinion, which as we know, was very instrumental in deciding whether, um, you know, on, on how, how to proceed with this. They are, those findings are summarized in the top of Bill's second report, Bill Murray's, Murray's second report. Which I can read, they're fairly short. And I think we need to, so hang on one second, this was May sixth. So hi- his summary of, her, she, her opinion was quite long, but Bill's summary of it, I think is fairly accurate. I'll read them. They would be accepting that for zoning compliance, outdoor cultivation of marijuana is considered a commercial use, not an agricultural use under zoning. Second, definitions and allowances for exterior cannabis cultivation are not defined in the Hubbardston zoning regulations. Those regulations defer and cite the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission's regulations, which establish the relative limitations on growing. Her third conclusion was the use of trailers is permitted as an accessory use to the cultivation of cannabis. Her fourth, uh, root, uh, point was if a building is proposed, it must comply with the Hubbardson zoning regulations and the cannabis control regulations. Any use of a building must be for the direct support of cannabis cultivation. And fifth is, uh, growing for a tier six license is allowed within the residential district to the extent described by section twenty-two of the zoning bylaw. Ten thousand square feet, that's the limit. So if, I guess the first question is, do we have consensus around? Because it would be something that would go into the decision accepting town council's opinions on those five issues.
Alice, this is John. Yes, I agree. We're not lawyers. If the lawyer gives us a legal opinion, I believe we have to accept that legal opinion.
Is there any, I'm going to go through the list and I need to have people object or if you're, if you're going to object to them. So the net, because it's quite a, it's quite a few issues. The next issue is we, we would need to make a determination of the area of land that can be cultivated for marijuana in both the residential and the commercial zones on the property. So I did talk to the C C C today, but before I get into that, where we stand now is a zoning bylaw, let's talk about the residential dis- side of the line. Our zoning bylaw says that you, we can put up to eleven or ten thousand square feet in a residential district. Uh, so Places has said, has, has, and he did this in the property across the street. He would allow, in addition to that ten thousand square feet of land that it could be planted on, another thirty percent in order to, uh, you know, provide for rows and to track around it and so on, as the area that's, would we, he, that can be grown in this crop. So that would be um, fifteen thousand square feet altogether that can actually be grown in the residential zone. And the plan shows that they're going to try to, they're proposing to grow thirty-six thousand square feet in the residential area. So we have a similar situation with the commercial zone. Uh, the commercial zone, the C C C limit to, to, to the permit is fifty thousand square feet. So if you put ten in the residential zone, you'd have forty you could put in the commercial zone. And again, Places would allow thirty percent more. In the, in fifty-two thousand square feet, but your plan shows seventy thousand square feet. So the, so the first question is, if we were going to, do we accept your plan? Is, is it shown or do we limit the number of square feet that can be grown to more met, to match? Um, so I did, I did speak to the C C C today. Um, and to ask, what is the ten thousand square feet? Is it the land? Is it the crop area? Which is the right number here? Um, and honestly, I did not get a, a number. Um, but they did say that that there should be some space allowed to grow the crop, but you shouldn't be able to spread it out two or three times the land area. So I guess, I, I guess I would let you comment, but I would like to hear from the board so we can get through some of these board members. Where, what do you think? And I, and I want to hear from Bill too. This is a very fundamental question that isn't answered in this proposal. I'll, I'll let me, okay, you can speak. Go ahead.
Alright.
These are plans, the numbers taken right off your plan though.
Yeah, so basically, um, you know, the C C C says the ten thousand or, you know, the square footage of your canopy is the actual rows. So that the, of where the canopy is. So we're going to have rows that are four by four. Now, we don't have any extra room in the commercial zone. So we're going to try to do this with two or three foot walking paths, which means we're going to be trying to walk down a hundred foot paths and then walk a hundred feet back to the car path. So it's about as jammed as you can possibly get. And I don't think in seventy thousand square feet, we can do forty thousand square feet of plants. I just think we're going to come up short. If the planning board has remembered for the last six to nine months, I've said this over and over. I don't think we have enough room. If you go to the residential zone, you see we have a well, we have a shed, we have a, uh, a washing area, we're going to have some picnic tables there. I mean, that's taking up, you know, a good ten thousand square feet just by itself of an area that we're staging. So we have to have some room in here where our employees can actually stand that's not in a marijuana patch. Um, you know, the, the amount of room that we have in the residential, yeah, thirty-six thousand seems big, but you have a road that's on the top of that, on the side of it, on the bottom of it. And then you have all that extra room where you have a shed, a well, a washing area. You're going to park your golf cart somewhere and you need people to hang out. Um, so I don't, I don't think we're enclosing too much extra space at all. Um, you know, if we close it down, it's, it's gonna, we're going to have an issue with our revenue.
I'm not saying you have to put, this, this would not be, you have to put the picnic tables in the field.
Well.
It's the amount of square feet you can actually grow the crop on.
Oh, oh, oh.
Thirty-six thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. So, so I'm sorry to cut you off. It says proposed thirty-six thousand square feet zone of a grow area for up to ten thousand square feet of marijuana canopy. So it says that right underneath it on the plans. So we're only going to put ten thousand square feet of canopy in that area, but we also have that room for all of our other equipment and everything else we're doing.
But if, if you're not going to park the middle equipment, the, the equipment and the picnic tables in the middle of this field, you're going to have to have an area that's a grow area.
Well.
Actually the crop, and that's what I'm trying to define.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Pass it to Bill Murray.
Sorry.
Explain his number.
Yeah.
Well, I just took the, the numbers from across the street where they said they needed twenty-five to thirty percent more than the actual. So let's, let's use the term so we get it right. The canopy area is the actual green space that the plants will be growing in. Then you need accessory areas, which are the paths and the walkways and everything else. Uh, across the street, they said thirty percent of the canopy area would be open space. So if, you know, you use the number, you get, you get a square footage. Um, I, I think that this is not a valid argument. Number one, because this is a project that's in CAD. He can lay out his grow areas in CAD and show the board exactly what we're talking about. We don't have to do this as a philosophical argument. The CAD makes it very, very easy and can demonstrate to the square foot almost what is needed and what isn't. I, I personally think that they're. I, I personally think that they're pushing the grow area into the residential district. And I don't think that they need to, and I don't think that they've justified that they need to.
So. I, I can give you a real world example, so I, I know Billy, you're bringing up across the street, I don't care what they're doing across the street, no offense to Bowie. Um, so I'll give you a real world example, and I can show you right now what we did in Royalston. In Royalston, we have a twenty thousand square foot greenhouse. Um, in our greenhouse, each bay is forty by a hundred, it's four thousand square feet. In a bay, we are able to, with stagnant aisles, do seventeen hundred square feet of grow. So, we have seventeen hundred square feet and actually, it would be thirty-six hundred. So, in a thirty-six hundred square foot bay, we're gonna take the aisle out. We can get seventeen hundred square feet, I can show you a graph, we get seventeen hundred square feet. If we use rolling benches, we get twenty-five hundred square feet, so we have no aisles. So, I, I, I don't know, I mean, we're not trying to use more space than we have. Since our last plan, we cut down the residential zone from forty-five thousand square feet to thirty-six thousand. So, since the last reiteration of this plan, we have knocked it down by twenty-five percent. And that has a lot to do with, you know, phase two plans, but I mean. I mean, I don't, there's no master plan here, if you guys want to do this and play a game, we can, but I'm telling you, we need that space. And if we lose revenue, I mean, I need that space. I, you know, the, the amount of room that we have in the commercial zone is only for agriculture, it's only for growing. There's no room for anything else. So.
You, you keep telling the board this, but I keep telling you, you can show the board exactly that on CAD. You can identify where you're gonna park your stuff, you can show them on CAD where the picnic tables would be. We can demonstrate using CAD that we can minimize the impact in the residential district. But that's not something you want to do, you want to leave it imaginary and, and say that you need it.
I can show you a CAD, and if I plant in June, my CAD's gonna be different than if I plant in July, it's gonna be different than I plant in August. Our rows are gonna be completely different, depending on when I grow and what I grow. If I grow automatics, our rows are completely different. Make any box that you want, give us twenty-five thousand square feet, and I'm gonna put ten thousand square feet of canopy in. You know, the other ten thousand square feet are gonna be our staging area. So, what you guys are missing is when we go to plant this next year, we're gonna have rows and rows and rows of PVC pipe. And then we're gonna have a staging area where we're gonna plant this entire seventy thousand square feet, or fifty thousand square feet. I mean, I'm the guy running the business, and you guys want to use a, you know, example from Bowie across the street, where it's limited with space. We're not limited with space, we have plenty of space in residential to do what we need. We're limited in the commercial zone, but I mean, I'm the business owner and I know my business, so I guess we could probably just move on, I guess.
Well, the board has to, I think, decide whether they're gonna let you fill up the thirty-six thousand square feet as a grow area. Which is, seems like three times what the zoning bylaw proposes. I understand that you need rows, but without a plan that says, this is where we're gonna plant the green, this is how much we have row, this is the total canopy area, then we're gonna pick a a number to do that with, because you can't put in thirty-six thousand square feet of.
I'm, I'm only fitting ten thousand square feet, ten thousand square feet of marijuana, spread out appropriately, is probably twenty thousand square feet of space. That only uses sixteen thousand square feet of space to do everything else we want there. And it's not a lot, it's a hundred and sixty by a hundred feet. When we go to clean this stuff, Bill wanted us to have an area to clean it. We're gonna have an area big enough, when we start cleaning it, it doesn't screw with our plants. So, it's gotta be like a fifty foot area at least on each side, so when we spray, whatever we're spraying, we're not like destroying our revenue. Like, I don't know if that makes any sense, I mean, if you want to try to back it off, I mean, we can see what happens, but like, there's gonna be millions of dollars missing, if, you know, I mean. You know, if you guys want to pick a number, pick a number, maybe, maybe we can agree, it's thirty-six thousand square feet right now, I mean.
And we agree that you can have ten thousand square feet of canopy.
And ten thousand square feet of canopy, as the business owner, I need twenty thousand square feet of space.
Okay, so that's, all right, and then, this, we got the same thing in the commercial.
And then you have, but then you have the cart path, then take twenty thousand, now add the cart path on top. That's ten feet wide by two hundred and seventy feet long, that's twenty-seven hundred square feet of a path. You got six hundred square feet there, so now you have eight thousand square, out of that thirty-six thousand square feet, it looks like seven thousand square feet is path, so I'm down to thirty-one thousand feet. You know, so it's, and now we need a shell, a shed, I mean, we, our last reiteration, we had forty-five thousand square feet, we knocked it down to thirty-six thousand. And, and it wasn't me doing that, my engineers did that, to make room for phase two, and I wasn't very happy with that. It's not like I'm gonna line this up on Gordon's, you know, on that side, we're gonna be on the high hillside with everything we do, but.
Well, maybe, maybe you can say you can plant the ten thousand in up to twenty thousand square feet of land.
And if you want to try.
And you move it away from
We'll move it
property.
As far from Gordon's property as we can, so we'll put that on the top of the property, we're already planning on doing this. And one, obviously, it's away from Gordon, but, you know, Gordon knows that property. The top of the, where the, 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 uh, well area is, is perfectly flat. So, we're already planning on going up there. That's kind of, you know, it's perfectly flat, so I can tell you, if you want to just limit me to in that thirty-six thousand square feet, we'll only be limited to twenty thousand square feet. And we'll keep it on the, I think that's the north, the north, uh, the northeast side on the top.
And the canopy itself will be limited to ten thousand square feet.
Oh, that, yeah, definitely in the residential.
All right, um. I got five pages of stuff like this, because you guys could.
That, that was the big one for me.
Well, I will, I will try to move this along. Okay, what does the board feel about restricting the growing area to twenty thousand square feet away from the, the, the how did they say his name, Sigourney? Scared them saying that wrong. The, the residential of butter and only ten thousand square feet of crop. And then we did the similar calculation, and again, gonna have one vote on the whole thing at the end. I'm just trying to get something concrete we can vote on by the end of the night. The commercial limit, if you had ten thousand feet of grow area in the residential, which is the limit. Your limit in the commercial area would be forty thousand square feet. Right, the difference, because you have a D thousand square foot license, right? Your plan shows seventy thousand square feet. Bill's calculation, giving you a fifty percent extra room for planting for rows and stuff within the canopy, would be fifty-two thousand square feet. So, I don't know, um, what, you want to address the whether you have sent kind of this.
So, quick question.
Yeah.
What's proposed in the commercial is forty thousand square feet of canopy.
Right.
With seventy thousand square feet of overall growing area.
Right.
And if we, if we applied what we just did in the residential district, he would, he would need eighty thousand square feet of grow area. So, why is the ratio different in the commercial area than in the residential area?
Well, it shouldn't be bigger in the residential, it should be smaller in the residential.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, but I keep saying over and over, seventy thousand square feet is not enough room to do forty thousand square feet of marijuana. So, I don't understand why we keep going back.
Okay, so what, what do you figure you can grow in the seventy thousand square feet, thirty-five?
It really depends on what we're growing, are we growing automatics, or we're just gonna put them all close together? I mean, we can say whatever we want on a CAD program, but I'm gonna grow up to forty thousand square feet. So, how this is gonna work is, we're gonna make our rows, we're gonna put stakes in the rows, we're gonna measure the rows with an actual, you know, ruler, tape measure, and then we're gonna write it all down. And then we're gonna try to get as much as we can up to forty thousand square feet. And then the Cannabis Control Commission is gonna come in right behind us on their inspection, and they're gonna measure it all out. So, you know, I, I think I've said over and over, I don't think we're gonna get forty thousand square feet in there, we're gonna try. Um, you know, we're trying to go down to two foot paths. So, you can imagine walking through like a cornfield of a two foot path, where the canopy's creeping in that two feet. I mean, that's crazy. So, if you just do the math, if it's four feet of plants with a three foot row, and four feet of plants with a three foot row, every seven feet, four feet is plants. So, if you just kind of do a simple calculation, and then you start thinking, all right, well, the cart path takes up, you know, I don't know, five thousand square feet of that seventy thousand square feet. I, I mean, we're, we're, you know, we're now down to sixty-five thousand square feet. So, I mean, it's just simple math, if it's four feet of a, of grow area in a three foot path, it's seven feet. So, I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Okay, so.
And I'd like to point out that we already put the fence there, like that was approved a while ago, so.
But we didn't approve that fence.
No, you didn't approve that fence, but it's, it's in and, you know, I think we're good to go, I don't want to start changing my fence line.
Well, with the twenty thousand square foot grow area, you'd have to put in some kind of a divider.
Well, yeah, well.
You got to divide off that extra sixteen thousand square feet.
Well, yeah, that's sixteen thousand square feet, if you just look at our area of our shed to our well, you know, that's a hundred and twenty feet long, and we're gonna probably make that entire block just a dead zone. So, if you go from like left of our well and go down to the tip, you know, we lose like eight thousand square feet there.
That, that's just gonna be your, your warehouse, your staff, your storage of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, it's, but it's in, you know, that thirty-six thousand, so if we agree, we'll put twenty thousand square feet up on the top. And then, you know, obviously, there's gonna be room for the, the cart path going around.
All right, so at the moment, we're talking about, because we need to move on to other issues, allowing a grow area of twenty thousand square feet for ten thousand square feet of canopy on the residential side of the line, and a seventy thousand square foot area for not to exceed forty thousand square feet of canopy on the commercial side of the line. And the land, the land will be, we, the back, which is what you now propose, actually, with the commercial. But the backland will be demarcated to show the twenty thousand feet, and the crop will be moved away from the butter's line. All right, so again, I'm just getting something we can vote on, that's what we're voting on tonight, all right, everybody? Okay, so, then we go to um, the, the, the second area, we have parking, parking spaces and driveway pavement. So, what Bill has told us, um, the zoning bylaw requires, I mean, you can read it, uh, pavement for ten or over, ten or more parking spaces and store, a storm runoff system. Your plan shows gravel and country drainage. So, you can have one or the other. If you want gravel and you want a country drain, you have to have less than ten parking spots. You're gonna move for up to ten, you gotta, uh, you gotta pave it and put in country drains. So, I would suggest we reduce the parking spaces to nine. But this does beg the issue, if we do that, is that just a number picked out of the sky? Or, and I'm particularly concerned about the butter that spoke, how many people are going, are required to harvest this crop, and could be expected to be on there and it harvest, you know, at the peak time. Can nine, can nine people harvest a crop that size?
Yeah, that's a good question, so, um, I think we, we went over this before, but I'll go over it again. Um, you know, I really don't care what numbers people pick out of the sky and then come make us stink on a, on a public meeting, no offense, but you know, I'm the business owner, um, I think I know what we're doing. So, you know, we're expecting five to seven people, you know, if that at harvest time. Uh, so the way that we're doing this is, we have freezer trailers. Uh, we don't have phase two yet, which will require you to take down the product very nicely. Uh, so we're taking down our product with machines. Uh, so, all of our watering is done by basically equipment. So, we don't have people that hand water the entire system. Uh, we have a dositron system that we showed in our drawings, uh, that mixes the fertilizer, sends it out to the entire field. Uh, so basically, just a human, you know, helps with the, uh, the mixing of the fertilizer, I've never done it, so I don't know. Um, when we go to harvest, what we do is we chop down the plant, we run it through a machine, which takes all of the buds off of it. Uh, and then we basically just bag it in sixty pound bags, probably smush it a little bit, and then we toss it in the back of a trailer. Obviously, we weigh and do all this stuff by the CCC, uh, so it's really not labor intensive. Um, you know, from a harvest standpoint, uh, you know, what is labor intensive in a harvest standpoint is, you know, when you basically have a building, um, you know, like we're planning on building, like a nine thousand square foot footprint. You know, maybe it's two stories, maybe it's one, uh, but, you know, at that point, we will actually dry the product. And then, you know, you get into hand trimming or machine trimming, uh, but that's where you actually get all the labor intensive. Uh, so we're not skipping that for this first year, because we're just kind of throwing in the back of a trailer and sending it off.
So, the nine spots you feel would be sufficient?
Yeah, we actually have extra spots, we figured people might show up at some point and visit, but.
Well, we would, we would reduce the number to nine and keep the gravel.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you an idea, we don't plan on hiring anybody anytime soon, so it's me, Ron, we got one other guy. So, it's three people.
Also, so, board members, we're talking about nine spots and retaining the gravel. So, I got from reading the endless emails back and forth, you've agreed to mark the spaces with signs. Because you can't put stripes on them. You've agreed to widen the drive to eight, the eighteen feet with a twelve foot wetland crossing. You've agreed to install a wooden guard rail, showing it on the side of the twelve feet where it narrows. Um, and you requested an extension to get that done, was there some agreement as to when that would get done?
Uh, well, my only concern with that guard rail is it's, you know, in the wetland crossing. So, I don't want to be held up with any of my permits or anything by, you know, all of a sudden doing this at the last minute. I mean, I don't think it would need an NOI or anything, but, and I'm gonna have to involve conservation before I start throwing some concrete in the wetlands.
Okay, so it would be.
And it's not actually wetlands where we put it, but you know, it's next to the wetlands.
Install within ninety days and get any permission required, would be subject to getting that permission from conservation?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would just say, one, one thing is, I would assume we can use wood. But if, if it has to be metal, you know, it might have to be metal, I don't know.
Bill, do you want to weigh in on that?
I have no idea, so.
It's, it's really to advise people, they're going down an eighteen foot driveway, to advise them that it chokes up. Uh, wood is fine, you know, we just don't want a car or a truck peeling off the edge of the road, they're gonna go straight into the wetland.
Yeah.
It, it's more of a marker than an actual barrier.
Okay, one of these documents that I saw floating has a cross section of that, a drawing of it. Okay, and that was satisfactory to you, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just a point about the timing on the guard rail. Our conservation commission is gonna determine it to be a minor engineering change, I don't think that that's gonna be anything, um, in my opinion.
All right, awesome.
That, that's a simple letter and sketch, I think.
Oh, so it's night, but ninety days to get it built too, reasonable?
Oh, yeah, from us, yeah.
I, I don't think it would take that much time to get in front of conservation and.
Sixty days.
Okay.
Sixty days, can we do it in sixty?
Well, we just want it before he goes into operation.
But that's, I mean, I don't want to be held up if we can't, you know, if all of a sudden it's like an NOI, but the, the, the conservation meets on the fifteenth, so I think it'll change, I think it'll be good.
That, that, that's a minor change.
All right, cool.
In my opinion.
Okay, well, it needs to be installed. Um, so then, I don't honestly know the difference between, there was country drains and hybrid drainage around the parking lot. But I gather that you guys understand that, and you've agreed to a hybrid drainage system around the parking lot. Bill, can you explain what that would be?
Well, what we're doing is, we're asking them to put a berm next to the driveway, and it's not, it's a stone berm. The problem we have is, they claim that the driveway is made out of a crushed stone and that it's permeable. But after a pretty short period of time, with cars and trucks going up and down, it's gonna silt up, and it's gonna become a gravel driveway, and it's gonna create runoff. So, if they have a berm next to the driveway that is not drivable, nobody's gonna drive on top of the berm, hopefully. Then the water will have some place to actually recharge. And there's, it's a modified country drainage.
So, this would add to the width of the eighteen feet driveway?
Yep, and they, they do show that on their plan.
And how, how wide would it then be with the, the berms?
It's probably three feet total.
Okay, not on each side, but total, all right.
Uh, it's on one side, it's on the wetland side, and it's about three feet wide. And it's about three feet wide.
Okay, and it goes around the parking lot as well? No?
I think it's just supposed to drive.
Driveway on the wetland side, the berm. So. Is there any? Requirement for runoff from the parking lot? There's not a lot of concern.
Alex, we have Alex with his hand up.
Oh, yeah, Alex should be. He must have joined.
Yep.
Is Alex part of your crowd?
Yeah.
Damon, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I will reckon, if it's on this issue, I'll recognize them. Is it on the berman driveway issue?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, um, clarify something. Um, we have a. Proposed, we have a, uh, a. What is usually a temporary silt sock around, that is the external dashed line around what is most of the site. Um, in between where we're disturbing and the wetland. Um, additionally, on the uh, outside. Of the fence, we have. Um, a four foot wide stone. Um, berm that will be permanent and will act as a. Um, a basically a permanent salt sock, but it'll, it. It'll work better. It is what Bill is is describing, um, that we. I guess extend down the drive, down the existing driveway. Um, to Gardner Road, is that correct?
Yeah, but the question is, is it around the parking?
Um, yes, so by looking at the plan. Um, the. These, the berm goes, um, around the. Uh, I guess it would be the, the east and west side of the parking. Um, obviously, it doesn't cross. Over the, the drive, um, but it.
It's, it's outside edge, right?
Yeah, it's the outside edge, um, and it, 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 we tried to basically meet up at the culvert, but, um, there are some, it gets pretty tight there, so we, we. Just went until we'd get too close to the well end and we just left it at that.
So that is what we discussed.
Yes, yeah, that is, that is, was a, was a request, and we, we thought that that was a good idea. Um. So is it, is it now that we, we would just want to extend it and and include it on the other side of the culvert down to Gardner Road?
Yeah, it actually shows on your plan down to Gardner Road.
Okay.
The northern, northern side of the driveway.
Right, right, but not, it's just on that side we're look, we're looking for.
Right.
Okay.
And can, can you show it?
It's right, right. Okay, I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't, um, any additional, uh, drafting. I appreciate it, thank you.
We seem to have some consensus around the drainage. I also noticed that there was drainage, there was a. Safeguards for spill preventions under the truck series and so forth, but there's no debate about that, is there? It's all agreed.
Not from my side.
Okay, and the zoning bylaw requires. Uh, trees be planted every ten parking spaces. We only have nine parking spaces. Uh, Bill thinks that it's. One tree would not be meaningful in this wooded lot and that with the screening. Not being an issue to, for the parking lot, which is kind of in the middle of the lot. So this would waive that tree requirement. Is proposed, accepting Bill's proposal on that. All right, now we get to one of the, I guess, one of the main sticking areas of this all broke down, which is. Uh, the, a turnaround needed for the reefer truck and other vehicles entering from Gardner Road. So Bill says. Um. Points out to us that the zoning, the zoning article five point three eleven requires vehicles to exit and enter from public streets in a forward direction. And further, that mass DOT does not allow trucks to back into sites on state numbered routes. Including construction and other vehicles. The petitioner wants us to apparently waive this position provision. So that the reefer trucks can back into the property off Gardner Road. And proposes to mitigate the safety risk. By having a paid police detail, as the, if there's reefer trucks. Refrigerated trucks pulling it out of the prop, property, which he said would occur. I guess two trucks hold the entire crop is the idea, and you might get two crops in a season, so it'd be four entries and exits. Is that a fair summary?
Well, it would be for, for this, for, you know, our first year, it'd basically be just, you know, once in and out, so just one, one harvest.
All right, so the issue for the board is, because we can't vote with this determined one way or the other. Do we want to require a turnaround? And do we even have the power to waive that requirement? So I want to hear from Bill on that again.
Well, it, it's zoning, um, it's a requirement. I don't honestly. I, I think. There's a judgment called to say that they meet the requirement. The board would have to make the finding, and you'd have to be creative in your finding to say that somehow. They meet the requirement or the intent of the requirement. Uh, if you wanted to do it. Uh, and again, this is new construction, this is a brand new project, I. I do not recommend. Um, accommodations for new construction, and there are an awful lot of accommodations.
That have been made already, yeah, all right.
And we, we did, on the last reiteration, offered a, uh.
Hey, Damon, just one, one sec.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, but. In their defense, it truly is a pretty minor thing. I just, I personally, you know, as a site designer. Designed to meet the criteria, but. In the real practical world, this is a decision by the planning board. Is it really a significant thing? So, I'm done.
So, the run, the turnaround, if you, I'm gonna let, if the turnaround, if you were to put it in, would have to be essentially where the parking lot is, correct?
Right.
Okay, so you would have to move, you would have to expand your gravelled areas and put those parking spots elsewhere? Or?
Well. It, it would, you know, there'd be no cars parked there while we're trying to, you know, bring in a, if we're trying to bring it in forward, we wouldn't have a bunch of cars parked there at the same time, we'd have to have it moved out. Um, we, we, we did put forth a, you know, an alternative. That, you know, if you wanted to have something in writing, you know, we would agree. Um, to be, you know, we could do it, but we could pull in, you know, face first. Uh, the trailers, we could have the truck detach, and then, you know, the front cab could obviously turn around and get out of there. And then we could just take a machine and just pick up the trailer and just turn it. I mean, that's, that's one way to do it. We'd like to not do that, but if we had to do it once, you know, once a year, you know, we'd agree to do that. Um. You know, hopefully, we won't be talking about this next year, and we'll have a building there and till the end of our trailers.
I think you can hear from what board members think, because if you. Want one vote in the end, you might want to know where people stand on this.
Madam Chair, Bill Holman.
Bill, go ahead.
Damon, my question is, uh, we talk about phase one, you talk about phase two. Is this just gonna transpire for one year, and then you're gonna go, you're presenting to go into phase two?
Yeah, our hope is, I mean, we, we expect to put a, a grow in this year, um, you know. If we don't get a grow in this year, we're just obviously gonna stick with this plan for next year as well. Um, but yeah, no, our plan is just to put a building there, and we put a lot of, you know, work into getting this infrastructure plan in, so. I think we're gonna move forward with that, you know, nine thousand square foot, you know, it's a footprint. Um, you know, assuming it's just gonna be one story.
People are gonna ask here, Damon, is, you know, we've heard a lot of different changes over the last months of hearings here. Uh, people are gonna wanna hear something concrete. This is gonna happen right now for this time period, and next year, we're gonna go into this. And I don't think the board would be totally against a lot of me in the back. The trailers in there once a year. I don't think that's being unreasonable to ask for. But if it's gonna change in another month or so, if it gets approved. What's gonna change that? I, there's been a lot of changes in a lot of the presentations we've had.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that's gonna change it if it's, you know, gonna continue into next year is if we don't have a grow this year. And we'll, we'll probably just stick with the trailer ideas for next year. Um, but our intention is, is we have a grow this year, you know, we're gonna start the process over the fall and winter. Uh, and get a building in there for next year.
I have another question with that building. I, you're planning to build this in the residential side?
Well, um.
I don't think you can do that.
Well, the, the building, so. Basically, without, you know, with outdoor marijuana. Um, you know, I think I'm the only person to try this with the trailers, but you generally have a building to dry your products. Um, you know, what you can't do in that building is manufacturing. So my idea is most likely gonna be to stretch that building, so say it's a. You know, a hundred and fifty foot long building or a hundred foot long building, we would start that in the. Uh, you know, that fifty foot extension zone and probably extend that back straight, you know. Hmm, I don't know, wells, the well looks a little bit in the way from this picture, but the well is kind of a little more towards the cart path. So it'd probably start in that, you know, fifty foot extension zone. And then maybe slide back into residential.
All right, I got, I just.
Yeah, it's.
Saying it's not before us tonight.
Yeah.
But I don't think you can do an entire manufacturing, or your, your entire processing for your fifty thousand square feet of crop. In the residential zone where you're limited, I think you're gonna. I don't think that's gonna fly. We will get.
We can't do manufacturing, but we can do cultivation.
Yeah, you can do cultivation, but the cultivation is limited. It's processing the cultivation that you're growing in that residential area, I believe. So I read, I raised this question because if you're going to locate. Your, your building in the. Commercial side of it.
Yep.
Um. You're, you're gonna need to have rooms for, then you're gonna have a lot more truck traffic coming and going. You're gonna need to turn, turn around anyway.
Well, we're gonna have a turnaround for sure.
So, I, I don't know whether the people stand on this. I don't know how we get around. With DOR has a firm rule that we can't do this, saying, oh, well, we can overrule DOR and you can do it. I mean, that. Bill says it's being creative, it's being creative. Can we, you know? I don't know. I don't know how other people feel. I don't know how. This is why I was hoping that we could have a concrete proposal that we could vote on tonight. So are we voting on, I need to know from the board. Are we voting on a proposal without a turnaround or with a turnaround? Anybody, some people I haven't heard from on the board?
Madam Chair, uh, Christopher, this is, this is one of the tougher issues for me on, on what's being proposed here. Largely because I, I'm not sure what our authority is for granting that exception. Um, to, to the points that are earlier, it, it is a small thing, and it does seem reasonable. But if we don't have the legal authority or a way to stand on, on good footing with it. It, it does sound like an issue that's gonna be. Potentially problematic down the road if it established, if it established precedent, but it's also gonna be an issue because it's. It's something that's been expressed as being important to some of the members of the community. Um, so I. I want to make sure that we're on a good footing as a board to, to be able to, to make a finding to that.
Do you? Do you want to make a motion that we only consider, that we consider this, our vote dependent on their being or not being? Or I could let the petitioner choose, but we can't just.
I mean, would, would it work if we, you know, went with the idea of pulling in straight and just detaching and we'll use a machine to turn the trailer around?
That, um, that would alleviate much of my concern.
And, and I mean, this is literally gonna be a one time event. You know, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. The law doesn't say a turnaround's required. It says that they have to pull in and out facing forward. So if he agrees to do it in a way, in writing, that says he's pulling in forward, then he's not breaking the law, and neither are we.
Bill, do you want to weigh in on that?
I agree.
How you would turn a truck around, but.
I, I, if they drive in, drop the trailer off and drive out in a forward direction. You meet the bylaw and how they get the trailer into the space is really their problem.
Okay, so that would be a condition that the trucks must be turned around and enter and exit. Forward. And we'll, we're considering it. So. Yeah, I don't know how you show that on a plan, turnaround area? That's just. It wouldn't be like a cul-de-sac where you have to back and fill and do a three point turn with tractor, right? It would be.
Yeah, it would. Be just like that. Or, or the truck would drive in. Detach the trailer, get out of the way. And then he'd use his front end loader to twist it around. Maybe, maybe you just. Pull it in straight, I don't know. But how, how he gets it to where it needs to be is not something we need to worry about.
So you would put a condition, trucks, any trucks entering the property? Well, any vehicles, because that's what they say must enter.
In a forward direction. I, I would, I would reiterate the, the requirements of the zoning bylaw. As cited, and I would say that the applicant has agreed to it, and then I would also request that the board. Uh, do as I said before and put two signs out, no backing, please take nose.
But how does that translate to something shown on the plan? Different, is it the same as, is it basically the same as putting a turnaround? It's just.
Uh, it's a condition, it's a condition of the approval that they will.
Out there to how to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I guess we don't.
We have a, uh, an attorney on the line, I see him. We can ask him how we do it.
I would just, I would agree with you, Mr. Murray, that the, uh, the condition at five, three, D eleven. States that you can only pull in straight, so we just put a condition that the, uh. Petitioners agreed to comply with section five point. Five, three, design requirements, item eleven, which requires that all vehicles must exit. From and enter into a public street by being driven in a forward direction. And that is a condition, he complies with that and he shall comply with that. And, and so he's legally obligated to comply with their condition, and he's agreed to it as a special condition.
Okay. Phil's got that right, because, all right, again, this is just trying to work through the list. Okay, we get to. An issue which was baiting on as recently as like this afternoon. And that's water usage, all right. So, water usage, we get a report from Goddard, your consultant, that says. The project is proposing to use up to ten thousand gallons a day for irrigation, but likely less with a drip system. So the petition, petitioner is arguing that this quantity will not have an impact on the neighbors. Where, and that the actual daily use, except on those really hot days, would only be between three thousand and five thousand gallons during the growing season. Except on the hot days. So we have a butter, on a butter who just weighed in. Who stated he had, so a, a four hundred and fifty foot well that can barely pump five gallons a minute. Not located more than a few hundred feet from where this well you're gonna install is gonna drag out ten thousand gallons a day on some days. And he is, it seems to me. Fairly concerned about as well going dry. And I, and I, I read to the board, this is my concern, but. Average, an average house uses three hundred gallons a day. So it's not comparable to a house going on the lot, ten thousand, you know, is three percent. Of, uh, you know, be thirty houses going on this sixteen acre lot to draw that much water on a peak day. So I guess we need to think as a board, are we going to impose limits on how much? Can be, water can be. Taken, are we gonna let him just take ten thousand out a day and? Say, well, we don't think this is gonna have any community, the impact, and if Mr. Whatever his name is, well, well goes dry, you know, that's his fault. Or, and in the alternative, if we limit water consumption. Uh, and he does have to grow a crop. How, how do we make that work? Like, for example, could he put in a five thousand gallon water storage tank? It could be, so then you could limit. The maximum use to five thousand gallons a day. I, so I need guidance on this, because I do think it's a community impact. It's one that's been brought to our attention. And I think we need to address it.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask a question here, and that is just to the petitioner specifically. And the second bullet item, it says the petitioner argues, argues that this quantity will not have an impact on the neighbors. I'd like to understand. How, how he has determined that it will not have an impact.
Okay, so.
Oh, I, I don't think three thousand gallons of water draining out of a, uh. A, a well is gonna have impact on, on the water levels when we're down five hundred feet. I mean, I, I think I could put three or four houses on that lot. And if one of those houses started watering their lawn, I mean, they're gonna use three thousand gallons of water a day. I just don't think it's a lot of water. So I don't have any scientific backup, if that's what you're asking me for. So I don't have any scientific backup if that's what you're asking me for as well.
That's.
But I do know that in Massachusetts, cuz I went through this in Royalston. If I just threw in a well for my cannabis hemp, I could pull ninety nine thousands of gallon of water a day out of there. Before I have to fill anything with the Massachusetts state, you know, authorities. Now granted, it's in, you know, a water district, maybe Bill's a better idea than me, but, um, you know, I went through this in Royalston with a bunch of neighbors. And then I had seven parcels, so I basically explained to them I can draw seven hundred thousands of gallons of water a day. But, um.
One second, one second. We understand, we understand that you, first of all, I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned that this is not. Uh, uh, something that you came back from an engineer or anything of that nature. And I also need to consider, which is really what the board has to consider here. Is the issue of how does this impact the neighbors? And, and I think that from that perspective, you will well understand that even though you may potentially be, as you stated, allowed to. Pull a extremely large quantity of water without having to pull a permit. Does not necessarily mean that the board at this point in time will not take that into consideration because of the impact that it might have on the neighbor. And, 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 and from that perspective, Madam Chair, I think we need to very clearly understand that this is, this is an assumption. That is made by the, by the petitioner and just wanna make sure that everybody has that clear. I'm not saying that it's right or it's wrong. I'm just simply saying we, we need to understand that this is not something that is scientifically been proven.
Okay, but, alright, so if you had. The sixteen acres and you didn't have all the wetland problems and so forth, you could hypothetically with two acre minimum lots, put in eight houses. Eight houses using three hundred gallons a day. Um. It would be twenty four hundred gallons and. And he's, and he's saying ten thousand gallons. I wanna hear Bill, Bill can assure us that we can, we will not drain this neighbor's water supply and that that's a reasonable request. To draw ten thousand that I don't have a problem with, but somebody needs to address that and it can't be just.
Yeah, the, the one thing with that ten thousand number, people keep saying it, we said that on the hottest day, maybe once or twice a year. Would we be drawing that? So we would be drawing three to five thousand gallons a day. So it's not just some random number we get by sticking our finger in the ground. You know, it's based on how many plants we have and then how many gallons of water they have, you know, as a plant. Um, so that's, that's how we know and, and just so you, oh, so everybody knows we have to meter our water. So we will have an exact amount of water that we use. We absolutely have no problem sharing that with people.
May I just, I wanna take a question. On the first bullet item, you do indicate, uh, that there is going to be the propose, you're proposing to use ten thousand gallons. But likely less than, uh, for a drip system. Wh- what is the actual quantity on a drip system based on the, uh, based on what you're proposing here?
It's three to five thousand gallons a day.
So that is therefore the three to four thousand, uh, I'm sorry, the three to five thousand gallons a day is actually using the drip system.
Yeah, and we're basically saying, you know, we got a stretch of no rain and a hundred degree weather. You know, we're gonna have to have a maybe a water, you know, two water day or, or something. I mean, it might, you know. Then that's, somehow that ten thousand, you know, gallon number got out there. We're just, you know, it was meant to say this is the most we could possibly use.
But Damon, if you had, that will also be the hottest day of the year and the driest day of the year for all of your neighbors. So that would be exactly the time when it would run the drill, well dry. So I, I don't know. I wanna hear from Bill. I wanna hear from somebody that tells me we could approve this. And you could take that much water out and the neighbor's wells wouldn't go dry. With some assurance with based on science. So Bill, let's hear what you have to say on that.
I can't do that. I can't, I can't tell you that. If he's doing three thousand gallons, that's two gallons a minute. If he's doing five thousand gallons, that's three and a half gallons a minute. If he's doing ten thousand gallons, it's almost seven gallons a minute continuously running twenty four hours a day. Um, and I can't, I cannot tell you. What effect that will have on the localized groundwater table, like there's no way for me to know that. That, that's geohydrology and somebody's gotta figure out the way we do it. Is we do monitoring wells and we figure out which way the groundwater is flowing from, from the site to the site. And then, then we can start to make comparison. We look at the soils. If you have porous sands and gravels, water flows through it much, much more quickly. If you have tight tails, it takes years for water to move. A few feet. Uh, I, I, and you know, I don't know where the civic knees dug well is. Uh, I, I cannot give you any kind of assurance on this.
Well, this is a question that didn't come up on fifty six because it has, because it has a well. We.
Yeah, he's not doing litigation either.
Alright.
Madam Chair, um, may I speak to the, um, the hydrology aspect of the question?
Yes, who are you? Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. So my name is Mitch Maslenka. I am a wetland scientist with Goddard Consulting. I am not claiming to be a hydrologist, uh, one bit, but I have consulted, uh, multiple hydrologists to have their input. On the project. Unfortunately, we couldn't have them join us tonight to speak to this issue, so I'm going off what they have told me. Um, so as far as the well goes, um. Since the Board of Health has issued a, um, a well construction permit. That should prove enough that, um, the Board of Health believes that the impacts. Um, that the well will have with this withdrawals will not adversely impact the groundwater supply. Um, that is what I heard from, uh, Don Proventura. An engineer, professional engineer, um, who works with, um, commercial sized wells. Um, and he, you know, he went into great depth about, um, how since, you know, we don't have. Twenty five employees at the private well is adequate. Um, and the Board of Health, you know, obviously looks into this as well, and they know that that well size. Um, is adequate for the, the proposed project for the site. Um, so that, that's the best answer. We could come up without hydrologists coming to the site and doing all of these. Uh, tests. So that's my input on, uh, that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have a follow up question on the, uh, to, to Mr. Maslanka.
Yep, please, go ahead.
And if you have that information, Mr. Maslanka or whoever has it. Uh, what was exactly presented to the Board of Health in terms of the, that, that, that I did to receive that permit for, for drilling a well? Was it, was it with all of the information that we are evaluating here, namely the drawing of this amount of water from this particular site? Or was it really only to accommodate, or was it to accommodate, I should say? Uh, sanitary facilities and or, uh, just other types of facilities that would require water, say, for example, for personal utilization or for people utilization?
I could not answer that. I am not entirely sure, uh, what the Board of Health's, um. Entire scope was. I know they had the site plans, knowing that it was going to be a, a large cannabis cultivation facility. So I, I would have, I would presume that they expected that the well was being put in for the use of the. Uh, irrigating the crops, but I can't speak to that entirely.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that. And I understand that that is your opinion and so, and, and it is so recorded.
I would just like to point out real quick that we would only be using water most likely for half the year. I don't know if that helps.
So, quick, quick comment?
No, go ahead.
What they have applied for is a well installation permit, uh, and. Goddard included a copy of it in their letter. And there's, this is simply a permit. In order to drill a well, you need to have a licensed well driller. And you need to drill a well. By giving an installation permit, it doesn't give you authorization to use the well. Because in Massachusetts, you need to test the water and prove that it's safe. So. What the Board of Health did is, uh, they allowed them to install a well, and I don't see any gallons per day. I don't see. Any information on the application, and I don't agree that this is. A word, uh, detailed review by the Board of Health. This is simply go drill your well, test your water and see if it's potable.
Bill, I think this is very important for us to record and to acknowledge as part of the information that we have received. I appreciate you having, uh, presented this to the board.
I do think the burden of proof is on the petitioner. That they can have, that's asking for an extraordinary use of a resource. Entire community depends on, with nothing to back up, that it can be safely. Used at that level. And maybe it wouldn't matter, but we had, and a butter that came tonight. That said he can barely get five gallons of water a minute to pass the test out of a well that's. You know, five hundred feet maybe at the most from, uh, from this site. So this concerns me. And I don't know how you get around it. Maybe you get around it, use, you cap it. You can use three thousand gallons a day. And if you need more than that, you can. I don't know whether you can have water delivered, the swimming pools do, or whether you can have paint put in or something, but it concerns me.
Um, alright.
So.
I mean, one thing we could do is we could, uh, we could do something with, uh, with Gordon's well. We could say, hey, if Gordon's well runs dry, we'll take money out of this community impact fee we're gonna pay. And we'll buy Gordon a filtration system, maybe a new well. We could put something in writing.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but we're, we're not here to debate, uh, these types of things. I think we're here to debate simply. The issue with regards to the well and not coming up with a solution at this point in time. The burden, as you have said, comes up to Mr. Schmidt to come up with a solution. Regarding the quantity of water that can in, in, in reality be, be drawn from this here without impacting his neighbors. I think we should, at this point in time, just record what we have and move to the next item.
I, I can, I can tell you that the engineer that Goddard cited, I know him quite well. And were he to appear in front of this board or write an opinion letter, I would a hundred percent back him up. He's a very straightforward. My company uses him all the time on public water supply projects, Don Proventura. But we don't have, um, that letter. We have a recitation of a conversation which. Is not a factual statement and we would, I would suggest that the board would want to talk to the engineer. Um, to make sure that your concerns are satisfied. But if Don Proventura were able to come tonight. Then I'd be able to tell you that, yes, whatever he is summarizing is likely the truth. He's never gonna give you a promise. Cuz we can't see under the ground and there could be a whole lot of strange things going on, faults and, and seams and, and things like that, but. He has a, uh, this is what he does for a living and he, and he's very good at it.
And there's a process for actually doing this with the test wells, right?
There is, yep.
Alright, I'm gonna move on to the next thing because.
Yes, Butter has her hand up to speak. Do you wanna take them now or do you wanna wait to the end?
Does it relate to the water use issue?
I'm sure, yeah.
If it does, he can speak.
Okay, go ahead, Gordon.
Gordon, you're muted. There you go.
There you go. Yeah, so my water issues start end, usually in, end of July, August and September, the driest season. Of, of the time. So that's when I think the, the usage would definitely drain it down. I know. Uh, two years ago, my neighbor down the bottom of the hill had an issue with, with his, uh, well. And it was just dumping water for days and days and it drained, drained it right down. So one side of Ragged Hill. You go on, um, the side where, uh. Uh, Tom. Uh, has, has the beauty barn and everything. That's all, all sand and, and loose gravel. This side of, of the hillside is all clay. I mean, it's the hard packed clay, so. The water doesn't filter into the system really well. And I know, so when I had my well, well drilled, I mean, they tried hydrofrack and hydrofrack and hydrofrack and to try to get. The numbers to come up. I mean, you see the, see the truck blowing off the top of the well like quite a few times. It was pretty impressive, but. They, they weren't able to do any, any better and they didn't have any more go down at the time, so. Otherwise, they would have gone down deeper to see if they could get, get more. But he, he was explaining, so the levels that were on the top of the hill. You drill down five hundred feet. And if somebody's below you and they drill down five hundred feet, they're gonna get the water because their, their thing is actually altitude wise. They're deeper than you are. But like, so the, you know, the driest season, that's when, that's when everything around you dry, dries up. You know, so my, my, I have to stop using my dug well. Like in July because it's, it's, nothing's coming into it. And normally, normally it comes out. From the, uh, southern corner over on the Wilbur's property and that's, uh, uh, the water comes pouring out of the ground. It's like an underground spring right there and then it dries up and stops.
Okay.
So is it, Gordon, is that your, your, your like twenty foot well that dries up?
Uh, both.
Alright.
Yeah. So my, my artesian well has, has some funky taste stuff into it, so I, I use the. The, the shallow well because it has much. More potable water than my artesian well, cuz anything, some, some places in Harbison has some pretty crappy water. And you get down, down in the bottom of the hill and they got a lot of manganese and, and sulfur in it. Smells like a bunch of rotten eggs.
Okay, we, we need to move on. I think it's. We've gone as far as we can go perhaps on this water issue. I mean, unless.
Well, I, I, I mean, I have a solution. I'd like to, cuz I need a vote tonight or outside. There's gonna be millions of dollars lost here. Um, so, I mean, I would vote, I guess, if we need to do some amazing stuff. I mean, it's gonna come out of the money I'm gonna send to town, no offense. Um, but we have to agree to, you know, to truck in. You know, water above three thousand gallons until we have a. The board maybe votes, you know, in a month or two that says, oh, it's, you know, we've heard from the, you know, whoever Bill said he wanted to hear from. You know, we'll agree, we'll only pump three thousand gallons. Unfortunately, you know, any that we have to, you know, truck in, we're gonna take out of the community impact fee. That we're gonna pay the town. And, uh, you know, at least we can solve it tonight. We'll only pump three thousand gallons of water a day. We go over that, we'll start trucking it in, we'll buy some tanks, put it in the tanks, which we're already gonna have tanks there.
Well, and then.
You know, that's an idea for tonight.
It's an idea, but the burden of proof would also be, you had to present. Subject to present, installing some monitoring wells and presenting some scientific evidence that. The aquifer will protect a draw of up to ten thousand gallons a day or.
Yeah, or, you know, we can start using our real number of three to five thousand gallons, but. Yeah, I mean, and I would be willing to do that, but a limited three will puddle, that will bring the water in. I mean, if we have to do this, it is gonna come out of that community impact fee we pay.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I would like to remind, I would like to remind the board that we are not in a position to renegotiate and, uh, host community agreement. This is not the, this is not the burden. This is not something that this board is, 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 can do and should do. And so I think we need to steer away from that and this argument really should not even be presented.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to renegotiate. It's just all commuting impact fees come out of what we're gonna pay. So, but I was just saying, I just wanted to be upfront with you. Yeah, we'll agree to bring water in, but it's gonna, it's gonna come out of the, out of the money we're given, but. Just an idea. Same thing if, if, you know, we wanted to do some monitoring with Gordon's well. Gordon's well runs dry or, you know, we'll put a filtration system in, but you know, something along those lines. We don't, we don't mind approving, you know, agreeing to something like that.
Madam Chair, may I make one more, uh, note about this subject?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, earlier you mentioned that eight houses could potentially go on this lot. Uh, and if they each use three hundred, uh, gallons per day for three hundred and sixty five days, that would put. Uh, the site at eight hundred thousand, six hundred and, or my bad, eight hundred and sixty four. Wait, yeah, eight hundred and sixty four thousand gallons per day. Now.
No, that's for you.
No, 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 no.
I think it's twenty four hundred gallons.
Twenty four hundred gallons a day versus ten thousand gallons a day. That's.
Well, we, we keep using ten thousand. I think we should stick it.
Right.
Thousand, but.
So.
I don't know, Bill. I wanna talk to Bill for a minute because we need to move on with this. So Bill. Would it be feasible, since this is metered water, to impose a limit, a daily limit use? And say amounts above that until. Amounts above that has, have to be provided from a different. Either, either a tank on the premises or a trucked in or something until they can provide data that shows. That it's safe to extract any more than that? Is that, is that just like craziness or could you actually do something like that?
It, it's getting close to trouncing on the Board of Health jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Um, but I, it's a special permit. And you have. Wide latitude with regard to a special permit. Wide latitude with regard to a special permit. For community, potential community impacts. You know. A a hydro geo engineer could probably. Might be willing to just do a a records research on it, identify the soil types, the groundwater types. And give us a an opinion, but I still want that person to show up. I just can't tell you if three thousand or five thousand is going to. Impact the neighbor's well on a. If we get into another drought.
Well.
I don't think three thousand is a is a very big number. On a daily basis, but you know, we'll find out. You know, you can ask the petitioner to establish a bond. To protect. Mister Sivigny if in case he runs out of water. And if Mister Sivigny would be willing to do it again, that's where we're getting into the board. Is. Getting between two private parties. If if they want to do that.
I don't know whether to just move on. Or whether to say, do you want to consider? Do you want to consider another extension to have the? You know, a hydrologist look at the soil records and see if if that can be determined? I I I don't know. I I don't know how to to deal with it, but. But it's pretty hard to ignore a petitioner that's. Shows up at a meeting and says, I'm worried about my well. And he can hardly get. What he's allowed to have. And it's four hundred and fifty feet deep and you're gonna pull out. You know, potentially forty times that. I I have a problem with that. I'm just telling you. But we can go on. We can do, we we can move on and revisit it if you want, or we can. I don't know.
Yeah, I guess we'll just move on. We can try to revisit it with a fix at the end. I could always just bring in all of my water. I mean, I'll I'll do whatever. I just want to yes vote tonight with some conditions if I can get it.
Okay, well, temporary trailers and storage buildings, we had, um, let's see. Okay, so we have town council's opinion, this would be allowed. We have petitioner's opinion that says you're only asking to do this for a year. And your, the limit would be two trucks. That would only come in at harvest and out at harvest. Um, and they would not be parked on the premise. Right? Um, and now their power source is what? A generator? Or I know you have. Electricity coming to the site, but.
Yeah, so right now those trailers are not gonna be, they don't draw any electricity until harvest time, so they basically just get parked. They're they're not turned on until, you know, sometime in September.
Would they be parked there till September or?
Oh, yeah, they they get parked there, uh, security cameras get run into them, so there's security cameras inside the freezer trailers outside, you know, there's.
But you wouldn't need to bring them on the premises till you're ready to harvest, right?
No, no, they get on the premises before we get approved by the Cannabis Control Commission. So they have to be there before we get inspected and approved to grow. They never move, they got, they're they're hooked up with, you know, they get hooked up with uh wires, with cameras. And then before they move, they, you know, gets disconnected.
So what? Months of the year or what period would they be parked there? Because you represented to us, this wouldn't be parking space for them all year.
Right, it's gonna be there from the beginning, so it'd be, you know, May to September or October.
Okay, few harvest, so they'd be parked there like six months a year.
Yeah, well, just hopefully six months this year. Then we're selling.
Okay, so that would, that would, that should be noted and there. You now have electricity as a power source or they're going to be run by gas generators?
It's gonna be run by protein propane for right now. We're working with National Grid. To get, you know, real electricity. On the street.
Okay, so they're parked there, but they don't run until harvest time, or do they run all the time?
No, no, they only run, so it's a freezer, so we're not gonna have the freezer on until we're ready to put stuff in there.
Okay, and we had asked this question before and I don't know whether we ever got a satisfaction satisfactory answer about noise mitigation. What, how much noise do they make and?
Yeah, I think we had sent that in, but it's it's basically less than the generators.
So it would be less than a truck idling, for example.
Oh, correct, yeah, so it's it's, yeah, definitely.
Okay. And you now have a spill prevention plan that's satisfactory to Bill?
I believe so.
Okay. And the lighting and security plan. So, Bill, you would have to note they have to be. He's looking for them. The permit would have to say they're allowed to be parked from the first of May till. Through harvest. On site.
Yep.
And then they would not be allowed to be parked. Rest of the year. And we're looking for a one year. We have a storage building. The storage building. Set been added to the plan?
No, uh, yes. It's a shed.
Okay, it's a temporary structure or permanent structure?
Um, well, I don't know what you would call it. I mean, it's.
Do you need a building permit to put it on there?
No, I don't think so. I'd have to ask Roland, but.
Hundred and twenty feet. Square feet.
Anything over a hundred and twenty square.
Yeah, it's less than that. Yeah.
Okay, then I think you would consider it a temporary structure, right? That doesn't require a building permit?
It would be an access accessory structure.
Accessory structure. So it has no, no. Um. Electricity and no plumbing? It's just a, or it does have.
No, it's just a shed.
Okay, so all of your fertilizing mix, all of your, all done open field?
Yeah, so like the fertilizer will be in there. Um, Bill actually had a good idea of kind of doubling it up, putting in plastic, uh, like a plastic bin will do. Um, and then, you know, shovels and, you know, any other equipment that we have will be in there.
When the person comes out primes the irrigation system with it. So there's no mixing, there's nothing that goes on in there but storage.
Yeah.
It's a storage shed. And what is the? Okay, and it is shown on the plan and is it it's in the residential area?
Correct. So it's the one part of the residential area that it actually borders the DC, like, uh, I think. What is it, public land or something, DCR land back there? Um, so it's it's up on that end, so basically the exact opposite from where Gordon. Gordon's property starts.
Okay, and it it is setback from the property bounds appropriately?
Yeah, yeah, it's inside the fence. So everything basically takes place inside the fence. The employees, you know, won't go outside of the fenced area.
Okay, we're down to, uh, we had a lot of issues around odor mitigation. And. So I mean, one one thing we're gonna do is is move the grow area back from the one neighbor. It's the closest.
Definitely.
And you're gonna show how on your plan how it's gonna be done. Um, so we had put in our last certificate. Um, that the. The lower odor. Breeds, which we we listed as fifty percent more. Indica varieties. Uh, so it, the condition was you would plant only fifty percent or more indica varieties and you had an objection to that. No, or was?
I agree.
Okay. And then you had an objection to, we had. And I think it's. Maybe more of a principled objection, I mean, the way we're saying it or something, but we had a condition. Because we spent a lot of time on this. Um, that harvest would occur before. The plant. Reached its full maturity. But you're saying that that's incorrect. How, so how would you describe harvesting it in such a way that? To to counter what?
Yeah, well, I think we kind of agreed with what, you know, I guess, you know, Bill's. I think we somewhat agreed, you know, with the idea that you guys were going with. Is that we're gonna use early strains. Uh, and obviously this is this year we're going for manufacturing. Um, as we're doing the flash freeze, but early strains by definition. Not only they come due early, but that's all basically based on their flowering period. So, you know, instead of flowering for ninety or a hundred or a hundred and twenty days, you know, maybe they flower for sixty, seventy, eighty days. So it's 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 an early variety or early strain. And while we use them as one, they come due. Earlier in September, they're they're not coming due in late October, but it does cut down the flowering time. So by using those strains, you know, we are cutting down on the amount of days that they're flowering. Um, so, you know, we can't just, it would be arbitrary to say that, yeah, we're gonna cut it down before maturity. That, you know, just doesn't make any sense for us. Like you wouldn't take down a tomato when it's green. Um, so are are we don't, we actually don't go off of odor for when we take it down. We have a might like a, you know, we look at basically the trichomes. And basically tell if they're changing color and then we take down the plants. So. And it's gonna have a lot to do with, you know, is the season a hot season? Is it cold? You know, what the weather's doing? So it's.
So if you were gonna describe. The step you're taking to. That that would prevent it from reaching its full order. How would you describe that step?
Alright, so we look at the trichomes under uh basically a microscope and handheld and uh, once they become, you know, the majority of them, say fifty percent of them. Uh, start to turn brown in color to get darkened, uh, then we, you know, harvest the plant. Now, if we were to wait until quote unquote full maturity, um, I think maybe where you guys are going, you know, those. Would completely fill up the trichomes with, you know, brownish color, uh, and then that's when you probably have like a maximum amount of smell. Now, if you're not careful, a week or two later, it'd be kind of ruined. Um, but, you know, we would take ours down early, so we don't have that problem. And maybe that's, you know, what you guys are talking about with Bowie across the street, but. It strictly, it's strictly based on the, you know, what we see under the microscope.
Okay, so if you're gonna, if we said you'll plant. Fifty percent or more, yeah, indica varieties. Early harvest. Early harvest varieties. And. Harvest as soon as they are.
Ready.
Ready.
And the the other thing I would like to add is. We could be in a real situations here, depending on if you vote tonight, but we also will be using what's called automatics. So automatics are a different type of marijuana. Where most people, you know, grow marijuana and it comes due in September, October, depending on when the sun, you know, starts losing the amount of hours per day. So it follows the sun. Automatics are a different type of strain that doesn't follow the sun. So basically you plant it and maybe about seventy, eighty days later, uh, it's ready. So real quick flowering cycle. Uh, so we may end up having to use those this year instead of the early strains. It really depends on. How soon we plant.
And what is their odor compared to the?
Uh, it's, I, I mean, it's the same. It's it's marijuana, but it's all about how many days it's flowering. Um, so I would say, you know, it's similar to the early strains in that, you know, it doesn't have a full flowering cycle.
So if we said you, and it is not a, it is not an indica variety, it's a separate, it's an automatic.
Well, it's called automatic. They are uh indica. It is a heavy indica strain. That's why I, you know, said I could do more than fifty percent of indica. But I was making a difference between the early strains and then automatics. They're two different kinds of marijuana. I just didn't want to get pigeon to say we only do early strains and all of a sudden we're planting in July here and we have to plant, you know. Twenty thousand automatic plants, these little plants. To give you the difference, A, an early strain will have two pounds of marijuana. A automatic will have two to four ounces. So you're talking the difference between a plant that has thirty-two ounces of marijuana. And then a little dinky plant that has two to four ounces of marijuana. Which I really don't want to grow. But I might have to.
It's it's your business, but. We we're looking for a way to say. That you're going to. Our concern is is the nuisance in the community from the odor. So I'm looking for a way to not impair your ability to grow what you want to grow, but I don't know how to say it, so I don't.
I I would, I would say when we're growing for manufacturing, we will use early strains and automatics.
Okay, which are?
Which are all, which are all fifty percent or more indica.
Okay. Oh, did you get that?
One, one, Madam Chair, I I do want to clarify something and that is. I I understand that and we have the same issue that was uh discussed at the at at the other side of fifty-six. The the component of early. Uh harvesting was really brought in because of the fact that. At at the later part of the harvesting is is where it smells the most. The fact that that's not even, I mean, how 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 are we really? Using automatics or the greater than indica as as one measure, but really truly the. The fact that most of the smell comes at the latter part of the flowering. So I I I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily understand how this 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 comes comes into play here.
Alright, cool. So sorry if I wasn't, uh, you know, didn't explain it uh well enough. Um, so. Imagine a normal string that's not an early strain, say has a ninety to a hundred and twenty day period of flowering. But an early strain, you know, has a seventy to eighty day period of flowering. So when something starts flowering for generally the first three, four, even five weeks. There's really not much of a smell. The buds are just being developed. These early strains, you know, have an amazing ability to finish up in say three to four weeks, or maybe another strains taking six to seven. So what these early strains do is they take the amount of time where you possibly could have a little more odor and basically cuts it in half. Does that make sense? So the overall flowering period, you know, is significantly smaller. But what's really the difference is when it smells. So if you're going with some of these sativas or or, you know, longer, you know. Flowering cycles, you know, they're gonna have an extra thirty days where they're smelling, where these early strains, you know, you take them down before that happens.
The point always is that the the harvesting, uh, at least the way we have arranged this here with your neighbor across the street is is that. The harvesting would actually take place during the period of time when. The odor would be the least. I think I still fail to understand how just by. Taking these strains into consideration, even though they have a shorter period. You might at the very end have two weeks or three weeks or four weeks of very, very odorous plants. Are you proposing to still do an early har- an earlier harvest so as to prevent? The odor from emanating from these plants in 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 a very pungent manner?
Yeah, and again, I just, so odor doesn't have anything to do, you know, when a plant is ready for harvest. So, you know, we look at the trichomes under a microscope and then.
I'm sorry, Baman, I'm sorry, I I have to interrupt you. That's not the point. The point is is we're trying to prevent the odor. And what I'm trying to understand is is how are you, how are you preventing the odor and that is just not clear?
Well, the best that I can do is to have plants that don't have. You know, sixty days of odor time, you know, and only have plants that have maybe twenty to thirty days. I mean, it's it's outdoor marijuana. There's no marijuana that's not gonna smell around harvest time. Okay, just, it's. You know, and for me to get up here and say I'm gonna chop our our plants down three weeks early and lose like five million dollars, I mean. It's, I just don't want to mislead you. And we're we're gonna literally take them down based on the trichomes and when they change. Because that basically means that our THC, which we're mining our marijuana for, you know, is at its at its best. Um, I mean, all we can do is, you know, not agree not to grow the stinkiest kind of marijuana that we can find.
So if we say you were to, you agree to all, you agree only to grow. Fifty percent. You, you agree that only. I'll see if I can, I'm really getting tired. Um, fifty percent or more. In the varieties that are fifty percent or more. Indica. And. You agree to harvest them before they reach their full odor potential. Would that be good?
Yeah, that is correct, because we we do do that, because we we, according to when the the trichomes change, we take them down. So technically, yes, you're right.
Okay, in order to minimize odor in the neighborhood. Alright, so that's that's Bill. Can we live with that? Can you get that down down? Okay. Um. Like, other odor things were, what's the other? Okay, we need to ask you, your friend Bowie said he's covering his fences. Are you covering your fences? Are they open fences?
We are going to have, uh, in one section, we're gonna probably do some shade cloth. Only on one section of it. We're, you know, no one can see into our property from where we are unless they, you know, try to come to our property line. So one section of the by law, we're gonna have to put some sort of shade curtain on.
Okay, and that's not shown on your plan?
Uh, I think there was a late addition to our plan where we might put, you know, a six foot fence. I think it kind of got a little little extended. But if you do look at our latest plan. We do have. Uh, hopefully it's on there. We do have a possible proposed six foot shade fence. Um. Which I don't know if it would possibly go that far. Um, that's one of the considerations. Um, which I don't know if it would possibly go that far. Um, that's one of the considerations we might do down the road. But no matter what for that land from the DCR, we are gonna have a shade cloth there. So you can't have anybody look at you from a public piece of property.
Oh, do you know which boundary that would be, Bill, from the drawing? He's talking about.
They showed on the drawing, it's the northwest corner.
Okay.
In the residential district.
Which is not the butter. It's complaining.
No, it's the, DCR.
It's the other side of the land.
Yeah.
Can't see onto our property, you know, unless he's really trying to.
I guess the question was, is, is it? The purpose is not to mitigate odor. Of shade fencing.
Hmm, I mean, no, it might help with odor, but our purpose is to follow the CCC guidelines, which says somebody from a public piece of land can't see this without a binocular.
Okay.
So we have to shade it from that DCR land.
Okay. Alright, so. I guess one of the conditions would be put in the shade fencing. I didn't see it in the plan, but if it's shown in the plan, if it's there. Um, okay. Alright. So there were a whole bunch of these. These things that you would do to mitigate odor coming from a processing. So we're just gonna put a condition in that says no processing will occur. It, it is permitted under this permit on this property.
Well, I think one of the things was in there when we have our building. Like, we're, you know, definitely gonna have our building be completely sealed up and, you know, have what Bill's asking for across the street.
That you have to come back to us.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, I just put not out.
Okay, so we put, put no, no processing in this. Okay, we've had then, uh, fencing considerations, this argument about, you said. So these are basically an eight-foot fence with a two-foot razor wire extension and buried ha- a foot and a half under the ground. But somewhere in your. Narrative, you said that there would be gaps under the fence for small wildlife to enter and exit. But I don't know how you can bury the fence and have room for the wildlife.
I think what he's talking about is, it's, it's, um, you know, we have not large holes, but there's large enough holes in the fence. Paneling that small animals like squirrels, you know, maybe rabbits can just go right in and out of the fence.
So they go through the panels, not under.
Through the panels is what I think he was referring to.
Okay. And then there was the, the issue of the kind of wire on the top of the fence, and you were in favor of razor wire, and Bill was. Recommending against it and in favor of. Uh. Now I can't think of it. So, barbed wire, barbed wire. For the sake of. Uh, wildlife concerns. So. Anybody want to address that issue? What are we voting on here? Razor wire or barbed wire?
I mean, well, the, the way that it would work is the razor wire sits on top of the barbed wire. Um, and there is, I really want the razor wires. It's, it's a secluded, you know, lot. So it, it acts as a deterrent, you know, there's, there's ATV, you know, paths going in and out of it. You know, we block those paths with large boulders. Um, now you can hear the ATV guys going through the woods. Um, but. It's just kind of a deterrent, you know. I've already seen people come up there, you know, they walk through the DCR. They haven't really done it since we put our do not trespasses on, but. It's just, you know, I don't want someone coming up there with ATV hooking it to our fence and thinking they can just pull down our fence. You know, if there's barbed wire there, it's, they're gonna pull down our fence and now they're gonna have barbed wire that they get to play with. And all this would happen in the middle of the night. Um, so it's just a deterrent, but. Something we can honestly work with, but we just, we kind of want it back there. It's kind of a.
Let's hear from Bill, because it's getting very late. Bill?
I, I think my. Uh, notation is pretty straightforward, that. Quite a few birds are injured by the razor wire. Sure, they don't do it more than once, because they bleed out and may die. Um, it's, it's a potential harm to wildlife. I think it's mostly birds and bats, but that's, that's the concern.
Well, we gotta vote on it one way or the other. If you really still want to vote tonight, barbed wire or razor wire? It's your call. Um. Damon?
Um, I guess. I mean, I really want the razor wire. I mean, if you guys will give me a yes vote tonight, I guess I could lose it. It's just a security thing, I mean. It's, we're trying to deter people. Because, you know, what I'm trying to do is when people go look at it during the day. They know not to come back at night. But I'm willing to work on that one. I mean, I really want my razor wire, but.
What does the state require on this?
Uh, they actually don't have a requirement for, um, you know, you basically just have to make it so it's secure enough for your location. So it's really subjective. You know, like Bowie across the street wouldn't have it, because the police can see him, you know, so, you know. Doesn't, maybe it doesn't make sense for him to have it there, but, you know, we're not in a location where people know that the police are passing by and that they're looking at it. So, I mean, we do have some great security. I mean. Our entire fence line is gonna be lit up with cameras, not lit up at night, they're, they can see during the night. I mean, and it, and it is a monitored situation. So, I know, hopefully that makes Gordon happy. Gordon, if anyone steps on our property. We will have about fifty cameras that will see them, and then we can literally start yelling at them through the cameras, so.
Alright, we'll go back and take a few comments from the board before we vote, if you really want to vote tonight. Um, so other conditions that they, that have to be, I think. Me, you're not in dispute. You have to do an, uh. NPDES permit, a DEPMW fifteen permit. And I don't know, do those have to be granted before you can plant, Bill?
Yeah, they're, the federal and state authorities, so. That's not a planning board issue.
Okay, he just has to, but our permit would be subject to obtaining them?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's got to obtain them before plant. And then, um, another issue, the cover crop. Offseason. And what, um, Damon, were you willing to plant a cover crop off-season on these fields?
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
And do you know what the crop would be, Bill? You want to recommend a crop or a variety of crops, suitable crops?
I. I don't know.
I think Mitch had, Mitch had made some, I think Mitch had outlined what we were doing.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I could make some recommendations. Uh, it would either be rye or oats. It would really depend on, um, more than, you know, month. And conditions of the, the weather that I'd make that decision, but rye or oats.
Such as rye or oats would be.
Yeah.
Alright, alright. Okay, length of the permit. Length of our permits, another issue. So this would be a permit for a year. It could be. Uh. Renew, renewed another year, or how, how are we gonna do this? What are you asking for?
Well, I mean, we have a host community agreement with the town that ran five years, so we would like to have it end at the, you know, the time that we have our agreement.
But it would be superseded by any, so you want it, you would like, you would want this arrangement to last for up to three years.
Yeah.
But to be superseded, and then it would end, but you could supersede it in the meantime, so it'd be three. Three crops, okay, um. We had a condition in the other that I think you agreed to, which was, um, three. Credible complaints regarding. Odor triggering a public hearing. That language we put in Bowie's.
Yep.
Okay, alright, so. So Bill, what am I overlooking? I mean, there's some things we have to. Review. If we're gonna do a motion and we're gonna try to vote tonight. You still want us to do this, or you want to bring your water guy in? Because I think that's gonna be the tricky issue.
Well, I, I, if it's possible, I mean, can we have a yes vote tonight and then pending, uh. You know, acceptable solution for the water that we can work on? I mean, my big thing is, is that, you know. June looks out the window for us, and, you know, the amount of money we're gonna lose in June. I'm not making this up. The town's gonna lose a couple hundred thousand, because we plant in July. Um, so, you know, we need to plant in July, so I really need to get a yes vote tonight. Um, and then it could be pending, you know, whatever you guys want for the water. Now, we could start with three thousand max, and we'd have to truck in the water after that, you know, pending, uh, you know. Whatever Bill feels is necessary to hear from the, the hydrologist.
Okay.
And I feel very confident that they're gonna, you know, that this is gonna come back in five thousand, you know, gallons a day isn't gonna be much, I mean. I don't know, on Ragged Hills, wasn't there gonna be some sort of like a apartment complex or something, or?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, but we have other things on our agenda, and if you want to vote tonight, I will give you a.
Alright, let's move on.
Unless Bill thinks we can't do that. If we go through this. So the following modifications to the plan would be accept as planned as they are. Uh, presented, except. Listen, every board member's listen up, and I'm gonna review this, because this would be the basis of the motion. To accept the. The, the permit and plans as presented, except to limit the. The area in which the, to limit the grow area in the. A residential area to ten thousand square feet of canopy. Uh, to be grown in no more than twenty thousand square feet of area. That, to limit the. Uh, and then to, the plan shows seventy thousand square foot of grow area for up to forty thousand square feet of, of. Uh, canopy in the commercial area, so that would not change. Um. No other crops to be grown. That was something I didn't ask you before, but it was in the original permit. But you're not doing Christmas trees, you're not doing hemp, right?
Nope.
Okay, so no other crops to be grown, uh, parking spaces, uh, to be. Limited to nine, to be shown as presented. To be drained through the country drainage, country drain system. To be marked with signs. Um, driveway to be eighteen feet wide, twelve feet at the crossing with an additional. Berms on the side to mitigate the runoff. Um. Um. And the stone berm to be in, installed, the whole length of the driveway on the, as you're facing the property, I believe it's the. Right side, is that correct, Bill?
The northerly side.
The northerly side. Um. We're gonna waive the tree requirement for the parking lot. Dexter tree planting requirement. We're gonna require that the reefer trucks and any other vehicles entering the property comply with zoning article five point five three eleven, requiring vehicles. Vehicles to exit and enter public streets in a forward direction. Um. We're going to, with the water usage, limit the usage of water to three thousand gallons a day maximum. Until. Petitioner produces some evidence. Um, that.
You, you, high, geo hydro, geo hydrologic study or assessment.
Or, okay, or assessment, that more water can be safely removed without harming neighboring wells. That, um. The temporary, the two refrigerator trucks. Uh, will be located on the property from May through harvest, parked elsewhere at other times. There wouldn't be more than two of them. There. Won't idle on the property, be fueled with, or driven, um. Refrigeration will be. The fuel will be propane. Um, which may be superseded by electric, if you can come to an agreement with the electric company. Um, I don't, I didn't say anything about the office trailer, but there is an office trailer, and we're acknowledging in the permit that he would be allowed to have an office trailer for security equipment. That he would be allowed to have a shed for sole purpose of storing tools, as shown on the plan, tools and equipment and chemicals used. Uh, that we would accept their spill plans and the other documents that had been submitted in support. Of those issues, is odor mitigation, he would agree. We, I don't remember my wording to it, but to grow fifty percent. Or more dishy varieties and to be harvested before they reach their full odor potential. That's what we said. Um. There will be no processing of the crop. Um, just harvesting during this, allowed under this permit. Um. The fencing. We gotta go one way or the other. Do I, somebody want to make a motion from the floor? How we should consider fencing, barbed wire or razor wire?
Madam Chair, this is, uh, Franz Schweiger. At this point in time, given the, uh, recommendation from places and associates, I'd like to take that as the means by which we would, uh. We would vote.
Barbed wire or razor wire?
It, it's, it's the, it's the barbed wire, not the razor.
Barbed wire, okay.
Great. Madam, Madam Chair, I've, uh, I have the same feelings for that.
Okay, the fence would be topped with barbed wire and not razor wire for protection of wildlife. Um, other conditions, the N, the NPDES permit must be obtained, the DEPMW fifteen permit must be obtained. Obtained a cover crop must be planted off-season, uh, suitable cover, cover crops such as rye or oats. The permit will be good for. Three years. And then it will expire. If there are three or more critical, credible complaints from neighbors regarding odor, will trigger a public hearing, the provision would read the same as the previous. Permit we issued.
The, the only thing I'd say about that is, I'm a little wary of committing to anything ahead of time. I made a note of that in our response. So I think how it reads for Bowie's is that you have a public meeting and then he commits to changing something. I'm just a little wary of that.
We have language we put in that permit, Bill.
Say again?
Do you have the language you put in Bowie's permit?
Not on the top of my head, but what it does say is the board reserves the right. To determine, uh, three credible complaints. As a potential violation of the permit, and then we refer to the clause that we have. In the permit that says the board on its own action or initiative can. Uh, move to vacate the special permit. If, if you find, you know, violation, if you find a violation and it's egregious enough. You can hold a public hearing and withdraw the special permit. So that. It's got pretty strong teeth.
So. Yeah, so when I responded, I, I had said my language was, you know, we would. I can pull up what I said, but it was basically like, you know, well, you know, commit to trying to, I guess, re, uh, you know, fix any problems, but. You know, we're dealing with a five-year agreement we have with the town. And I put a hundred million dollar price tag on that, so it's twenty million dollars a year in revenue. So I'm a little weary of saying, alright, well, we're gonna go build a building. And then give you guys the right to just say, oh, you're out of business. Like, where's all that twenty million dollars a year going? You know what I mean? So we have an agreement with the town for five years for an outdoor grow. And I'm a little weary of putting anything in writing that says, oh, you guys can just cancel that anytime. Like, where's the provision for our, you know, lost twenty million dollars a year? That's just that, that was what I responded is, you know, we'll go to the public meeting. Obviously, we're gonna listen and we'll do everything we can within reason to fix it. But just because three people come out and say, oh, it smells, like I'm not gonna lose sixty million dollars. You know, that, that's where I guess I was going with that. But. You know, I mean, it just kind of puts it, puts it out there to say, you guys can just cancel us anytime you want, when we have a five-year agreement in place. So that's, that's, so that was my language when I went back there that said, you know, we can't commit to making any changes that. You know, we don't know what they would be ahead of time, but we would commit to, you know, doing everything in our power to try to fix it if it's reasonable.
Madam Chair, wouldn't it be fair to say that during the public hearing, that option is still available?
Yeah.
Um, you, you can. I mean, I, I don't know. If you, if you. I was gonna use the same, the same provision we used, and I don't have it in front of me. Do you have? Let, let Bill read the provision, see if it's something you can live with. Okay.
I got the document, I gotta find it. Uh, cover crop modifications, monitoring odor control. Complaints pursuant to the requirements of zoning section seven point one. Section eight. Point four A, etc., etc. Special permit shall require the board assessment provide mitigation for impacts on the neighborhood. If the planning board or the board of health receives three or more credible complaints about orders from the operation, the planning board will require. The applicant to attend a public meeting to address the complaints and to advise what operational changes will be made to mitigate the odor. The rights reserved by condition seven. Dot eighteen dot eight are specifically reserved under this provision, so. Let me go to seven dot eighteen dot eight. The planning board hereby reserves the power to modify or amend the terms and conditions of this. The planning board hereby reserves the power to modify or amend the terms and conditions of this approval on the petition of the owner, leasing. Or mortage of the premises or upon its own motion for cause. All provisions of this paragraph applicable to approval, where appropriate, be applicable to such modification. Or amendments, such powers hereby reserved.
So that's, that's the clause I would put in. I mean, we can hear from Mr. Connors, but.
I mean, you already have people on here that are going to complain. We already have our three complaints. They're already complaining now.
Yeah, but Damon, I would say that, I mean, I would say that it doesn't empower the board to revoke your permit. All it does is, is obligate you to attend the public hearing. And use reasonable measures to come up with a mitigation plan. It doesn't, it doesn't authorize them to revoke the permit, you know, nor do I think that based on what you've heard tonight, if they were, if they were inclined to approve it. Would they be so unreasonable to revoke the permit? They would ask you to use your professional guidance to mitigate the orders.
Sounds like my lawyer is saying, I'm saying yes. So yes, I agree with you.
All right, so. My. I guess this is the moment. I, I'll ask Bill, I ask anybody else, because generally, I'm not the one that puts together agreements here. But that would be, the vote would be to approve it under those conditions we just stated, so. If somebody on the board wants to make that motion, and somebody wants to second in motion, we'll have a vote. You need four. Yes votes out of the five people here tonight.
Alice, this is John Demalia. I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Don't have a second to the motion? Is there further discussion that would get us to that point? I guess I want to remind my board members, the 90 days expires on the second. And I think the last thing we want to do is have this permit go by default.
Madam Chair, this is Francois Steiger. The reason that I'm not seconding the motion, I still think that there's a lot of holes here, and first of all, I very clearly stated to. Mr. Schmidt and the individuals who are working with him, that all of this material really should have been handed to us by last Friday. Having received things to the last minute and for us to be able to not only observe all of this here, but with all of the changes that have taken place. I don't feel that this is ready for us as a board to, at this point in time, yet to. Yet to vote on. Not only that, but I think significant issues have arisen tonight with regards to the water. I understand that there is a need for water for such an operation. The question, the concern I'm bringing up here is, is one that has to do with how his, how the neighbors potentially would be affected. And without better information or proof, I think that as, as a board member, I'd be remiss if I would be taking an action. Which allows something like this here without having a full, full, you know, full, full deck of cards, as they say, and really good information. I think that we all have to also look at as to the, how, how acceptable are, is, is the environmental impact on this whole community? And at this point in time, I still have questions. I still have also not seen a final draft or final version of what the special permit really needs to look like. And from that perspective, I again feel very leery as a member of this board and representing this community to take an action on this evening. So my, clearly, there is, there is one person who has made the motion. I'm definitely not seconding it. I would rather determine whether or not this motion is going to persist and continue, otherwise I will. Myself put another motion, which is basically to continue this here on June the 2nd.
I guess, I guess, generally, the chair doesn't make motions and second motions. How about Christopher? Is your feelings on the, on this?
If, if Francois was to make that motion, I would second it. I feel like we are close on this, but. We got, we definitely got rushed into it and. To Francois's point, we do still have some, some open-ended questions on how it's going to impact the community. I feel like we've come a, a long way to addressing the water issue, but, but my concern with it is. For, for that a butter. If this goes forward and he does have problems, he's pretty much out of luck. His, his only solution is to go out and. Drill a deeper well, because. At least in Massachusetts. Everybody has reasonable access to, to water under their property, and because somebody else used it, that doesn't mean they have to compensate you for another well, so. I would like to see better protection for the community, especially in that regard.
So Damon, it looks like if we were to get our second, we wouldn't, you wouldn't have the votes to, to get through this tonight, I'm just being honest.
Why I was agree, you know, we agree to do whatever we need to, you know, with Gordon's well.
Why don't, why don't we, here's the problem.
Is it just down to 3,000 gallons of water? Is that, is that where?
Tom Bracco has his hand up to speak whenever you're ready.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yeah, I think we have a point of order. So we have a motion that's lacking a second. We, let's, let's, would there like to be, would you like to withdraw your motion and instead let. Francois promote, put his motion in.
Yes, Alice, if there is no second, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, Francois, make your motion.
At this point in time, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is, is I'd like to. Extend this special hearing until the next plausible date that we have as a board to meet. Again, making sure that we can keep it within the 90 days, try again.
I don't think we can do it unless we have, our next scheduled meeting is the third, if we were to do that, which is after town meeting. And that is the 91st day. So we cannot do it without an agreement of the petitioner.
Can we have an earlier meeting?
Then we'd have to be next week. Get anywhere for next week. You want to try, you wanted me to try to meet on the third? The third is, the third of June. Is the first. Thursday in July. The problem is, which would be an ordinary meeting of ours. But it is the meeting, and it's the last meeting which you're going to have this board in, likely, because it's a three-way race. For one of the seats. So. And if you want to consult with your attorney, you can. And Francois, would you, would you agree to the third? If we can get an extension from the petitioner?
Absolutely.
Okay, and what I would want, if we were to do that, would be to have a draft of what we've done tonight. And to have your hydrologist as a witness to give us some assurance on the water issue, is, I mean, as a participant.
Well, more specifically, not just, not, not, not just the, the, we need the specifics of the impact. Of the withdrawal of three, minimally 3,000. Gallons per day, that it, what it would have on the, not only in that terrain, but to his, to, to the adjoining well of, of. Of his neighbors.
So presumably, he could look at data, at least Bill suggested that.
Bill, I have to really ask you to chime in in terms of what, what type of due diligence. I mean, again, I think we as a board are mandated to. Take into consideration an impact that this has on the, on the community and, 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 and his neighbors are part of this community.
So a competent geo hydro, hydrologist, professional engineer. Is going to be able to say whether it's three to 5,000 gallons has any meaning. There are already published studies in the state describing what the soil formations are. Both ledge and soil above the ledge. We would want either a geo hydraulic report assessment. Or a professional opinion from a registered professional stating that. They're going to swear to the board that there will be no impact on the civic needs well from the proposed well on the site. So the variety of conditions.
I, I, I think, I think that is, that is reasonable, and in addition to this here, should, should there be a failure? As a result of the drawing of the water, what kind of mitigation, what kind of mitigating?
Remedy.
Remedies, I should say. Thank you. What kind of remedies can, can, can the petitioner provide to his neighbors?
That's a, I think you're going a slippery slope. That's a civil matter. I defer to the counselors on the board.
I think at some point, you got to realize, well, I don't know, I shouldn't say anything. Okay, I was going to say. You know, it would be helpful to know if you were growing corn instead, how much that would take, but I don't want to make. I don't want to say it's agriculture. I just need some scale here to understand what we're risking. As a layperson, is that reasonable 3,000? Is it not? Do you know what I mean? So. Okay, so there's a motion, Francois's made a motion with the consent of the petitioner to po, to postpone or to. Continue the hearing until June 3rd. With the hope that, at that point, the petitioner would bring a, a competent. Geo hydrologist to address the issue of. The safety of pulling of, of the water use. Is that fair to say?
It, it is, except for the fact that I think it also is very clearly and important that this back and forth that's been going. Between the petitioner and, and places associates has, has to really stop, and we need, we need to have a study, as we say, a steady state scenario here. Of the documentation that we as a board need to have, that we need to review.
So all other issues. To be resolved as presented, as read tonight.
As read tonight, absolutely.
Right, so we're not going to renegotiate the turnaround, the barbed wire, anything else. Before the vote. The vote's going to be based on the third, on. On what's presented tonight, plus if we can resolve to, to our more comfort, the hydrology issue.
Madam Chair, Bill Holmans, I'll make the second if Damon would agree to the meeting after the 90 days.
Damon, Damon agrees, right, Damon?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so well, I think.
I mean, on an email?
Yeah, I can send it to you in email, and then I just, I'm somewhat confused. So it's basically, we're just down to 3,000 gallons in the water and bringing in the specialist.
Yes.
All right. And then I will.
And for us to.
Go out of my way and reach out to Tom and make sure we're all right on this community outreach payment.
And Damon, it is, it is still for us to review the complete documents that have been provided.
Okay, so basically, water plus whatever.
And Bill, and Bill's going to get a draft of this decision out to you and us. So we can all see it before the third, well, before the third, and try to iron out. We can't do this night after night, we can't.
That could be a positive development. By the third, we'll actually have something that you guys can sign possibly.
Something we can, we can vote on, and we're going to be meeting in person on the third, I believe. All right, no. I'm not sure whether it's virtual or in person. We'll have to let you know. Mallory, do we meet in person on the third?
Um, state of emergency is lifted on the 15th, so I think we can offer a hybrid. Model. I can check with the town administrator and town council.
All right, we will let you know if this, how the meetings to, to be held on the third. So we have a motion on the floor. I know we do have one a butter that has something to say, but I'd like to vote on the extension, because I don't think he's, he's going to weigh in on the extension.
We have a second already.
You have a second already? Any other comments from anybody? Okay, votes, lived all eye.
Sorry. Bill Holman's eye.
We get everybody? Okay, all right, so I'm just going to let our butter, who's been sitting there for hours, to, to say a last word on this. And then I'm going to close, move to the next agenda item. So is Tom still there?
Yeah, I'm here, thank you. I, I, I would just like to reiterate a, a few things here. This is not just about the civic needs well. I have five wells within 2,000 feet of this property. This is probably close to 30 wells. Within a half a mile of this property. This is not a simple, simple solution, and it's not only about the water. Every time I come to a meeting, everything changes. He's going to have, he's telling us earlier in the meeting that he can have, he can't fit. All his crops on a, on, and he has to go into the residential area. But then he's going to build a 50,000 square foot building. Well, how's he going to do that? I mean, this is, it's getting to be absurd. What, this is, this whole thing is, is, is happening. It's just he gets changes from week to week to week. He never ever gives you a straight story, and if you're going to require him to do anything, he's going to take it. Out of the town, the money he's going to give the town. I'm sorry, I have over a million and a half dollars worth of property within a half a mile of this, this, this thing, okay? I'm looking, I'm looking at losing millions of dollars because of this thing. The civic needs are going to, their home is going to be destroyed. My home is going to be destroyed. My grandchildren's home is going to be destroyed because of him. I was very cooperative with Bowie. Because he was a straight shooter. He really told us, he really worked with us. Damon, he doesn't give a crap about anything in this town. He doesn't care, he doesn't live here. We all have to live here. When the hell are you, you people were elected to represent the peep type, the. The, the people in Hubbardston and the residents here. You have a responsibility to protect us, not to attack. Some guy that comes in with a different program every week. I says, I, I just, I just, I am so angry. That you continue to let this man just paddle on over and over again with bullshit.
Tom, Tom, whoa, we got to tone the rhetoric down. All right. All right, we, the point is, the point is taken. The point is taken.
I just wanted to know why his rights override my rights as a butter. Why does his, why does he get to do this, but yet he can destroy my property? That's the question I, what the planning board asked, and if needs be, that's what the courts will answer.
Hey, Tom, can you tell us how I'm going to destroy your property?
I'm going to recognize the point of order. This is not, not the. Your, your views are known. It, your views are known, and we have a job to do as a planning board. You've been on the planning board. Do you want to stand what our job is, and we're trying to do that, Mr. Bracco, so.
And you're doing a good job.
It will be back, will be back the third. You're welcome to, to come back to that meeting as well. There'll be another, find, another set of comments. And if you'd like a set of what was incorporated tonight in changes. If you, you know, we will post it, or send it to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to quickly interrupt you, I think Bill Murray would like to have one last word on this.
Okay, Bill, last word.
Unmute yourself, Bill.
I bet you like it. You like it better when I'm muted, don't you? I just wanted to remind Mallory that the extension needs to be filed with the town clerk.
Okay, I'll get that done.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, but it's, and you will do that, right? We have that word, word from Mr. Damon and his, I miss, Mr. Schmidt and his lawyer, right? All right, I'm going to. Hold you to that, get that writing, you've agreed to put it in writing, and Mallory, get it to the clerk. If it's not done, it's going to create huge problems. All right. I lost my agenda, so thank you. I'm going to move on to the next item. Sadly, we have more on our agenda.
All right, thank you.
Good night. So the next thing, and I'm going to close the public hearing with that vote. So. I don't know whether we need to have a vote to close the hearing. Do we?
No, 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 you're not closing, you're continuing.
Continuing the hearing. I may have motion to continue the hearing.
And to a time, date, and place certain.
Continue the hearing to June 3rd at 6:30 PM.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Lived all eye.
Steiger eye.
No, yeah, I. Bill Holman's eye.
Okay, so we both continue the hearing with one vote and close, and continue, I mean. Agreed, we probably have two votes on the same thing, but this effectively stops discussion. All right. The next thing is. Involves is the Bowie is going on with a request for a ZP. Variance with the zoning board of appeals. It was in the package. That is happening Monday night. It's their jurisdiction. It's not our jurisdiction, but I have been invited to attend. So I will attend. I mean, people, other people are welcome to attend if we have more. So I will attend. I mean, people, other people are welcome to attend. If we have more than three people attending, I guess we have to post it. Because it would be the quorum. So I guess the first question is, anybody interested in attending besides me? And also, if not, I think that the main thing we have to convey to them is that, that all of these things he's proposing were not addressed in our grow permit. These are, he's looking for waivers, not only for that building that projects into the zone, but he's also looking for a waiver for 36 parking spaces to be put in the buffer zone. And I, I don't know whether maybe Bill could answer this. Should there be any communication from the planning board to, to the zoning board of appeals? Do we have any right to take a stand on any of it?
Bill, you're muted.
Yeah, you're mute. I mute, yeah.
Hate that part. Yes, you have the right and the obligation to respond. It's very normal in most towns that the zoning board of appeals solicits the planning board's input on all applications. So you do in fact have every right to, as a board, have an opinion and relay your opinion to the ZDA.
Okay, well, I wish I could find my cheat sheet. He has five specific things he's asking for, for variances for. Maybe we should, we should look into the, I believe, wait a minute, let me see if I can drag it up. Anyway, we, we should probably, I shouldn't just express my opinion. It should be your opinions. So is there, one of the things he's asking for is, I think it's 24 parking spaces. He needs, he says he needs 45 parking spaces. Because that's just tallying them together. And I don't know, is he here tonight, Mr. Bowie? He is here?
He's on.
I'm here.
I, I want to ask him a question on this. And that is, I think for the board, because we'd all be interested too. So if he's there, I want to ask him, on the parking spaces, was this just a calculation you made based on the charts? For, you know, X number of spaces for X number of, for the various uses you have? And if so, which I believe it was, because I did read it all, did you consider requesting a reduction in the required number of parking spaces? Which I believe the zoning board of appeals could also grant.
I didn't consider requesting a reduction. 45 parking spaces, I, I, we believe would be a good number. The reason being, if I was lucky enough to make it through the, you know, the phase two special permit process and be able to actually maybe build some, some greenhouses and like the larger manufacturing building, renovate the store, so on and so forth, that would be a, that would be a busy property, so.
You have asked for 45 parking space.
That's right, that's right. So I, and, and my thinking there is 20 for employees and that covers the employees of the dispensary, the product manufacturing and labeling portion of the business and the cultivation as well. So that's about 20 between those three operations. It would be 20 then for customers. That might seem like a lot, but if you just look across the street, I believe they have 26 in exactly just about the same square footage, the same square footage that we're proposing. So it would be about 20 dedicated just for customers of the store. The reason why you want more spaces is because people don't spend a very long time in dispensaries. The average amount of time is less than three minutes. They usually know what they want. Before they get there, they pre, they preorder, prepay, they get out. It's usually there stapled with the receipt, just ready to go. So they get, they get in and out. If it is, I mean, it could be, it could be a very busy, small store now.
And the other five are?
Pre-pand, you know, we're, so pre-pandemic, it was, the car count was about 7,200 cars a day. During the pandemic, from our car count last fall, it was around 5,200 cars still a day. It's, so 20 parking spaces maybe seems like a lot just for a small.
Point of order.
Dispensary.
Madam Chair, there's a, there's a conversation going on in the chat for the meeting that shouldn't be going on. I would like to request that you ask those parties to discontinue.
Okay. Yeah, hold your conversations elsewhere, wherever the chat is.
So any, and the, the other five spaces were, would basically be either overflow or maybe dedicated visitor parking for people who were, you know, had required business at the, at the dispensary.
Okay, so are you doing courier service as well? This is part of it, was mentioned some time ago.
Yeah, we started the HCA for the courier service, but it, it got, it got jammed up when we were getting into the outdoor host community agreement. The council for the town, just for some reason, she ended up putting the two agreements together. And then I asked her to separate them. I didn't want them connected. And then we got into the outdoor portion of things and we haven't done any, we haven't moved forward on the HCA for delivery yet. So I'm not, I'm not addressing it really in this plan. But those five, just since, since you did ask, those five could serve for two delivery vehicles, yes, as well. And then, you know, we could allot a couple for two delivery vehicles.
All right, all right. So to my board, I, I really just wanted to ask him that question. So that we can, we, according to Bill, we can, we can and should send some input. He does a very good job, if you read in the, in his, his documents about explaining the limitations of the site. And which are, which are worth reading, why they would need to be put in the front buffer. But I did have, but I do think that is an issue because we just told the guy that applied for the locker, storage locker facility, that they could have no parking in the front offset. So it's an issue. You know, it makes the planning board look very inconsistent if we strongly support this. But I, but I do understand that it is a little bit different in that you have buildings you're working around and they're plopped in the middle. And you know, it's, it's a diff, it's not strictly apples to apples. I get that. So he's looking for relief for those 24 of the 24, right? 24 of the 45 parking spaces would be in front. And I also, another question with it, you show as your pavement, this, basically the parking, the parking spaces consisting of two strips of cement with grass growing in the middle. Is that right?
That's right. So, you know.
Why is that?
There's issues in this pro, I mean, going back to sort of the discovery of the DCR outer watershed buffer, that's the back third of my property, that kind of limits, you know, the whole thing becomes watershed, you know, sensitive, which everything sort of is in town. So that was really just, I don't know, that was an idea from Wesley Worth of just maintaining a more permeable footprint on the overall lot. Because that is, that's really, you know, why that, why we're doing what we're doing. Everything there now is because of that watershed buffer zone. So basically, less pavement, higher permeability, I would say. If, if it's not suitable, again, that was, it was just an idea that Wes Worth put forth. You know, obviously, we would get into the finite engineering with Bill and the professionals.
I think it's important that you decide whether on Monday, you present that idea or not. And to be prepared to answer questions like, how do you plow in the winter without plowing up the cement pieces? You know, how do you maintain it in the summer without the grass growing to look like a good abandoned parking lot? You know, I mean, it, it strikes me as a clever idea that goes with the, but it's missing some of its, the questions surrounding that.
Sure.
So, so that's a question that I wanted to bring, wanted to let my, the board know. So those are the parking issues. Then he's looking for, to allow the existing building within the setback. We've, we've already kind of looked at that. It's not, it's just the front entry of the main building, the old building, right? It is not a huge encroachment.
It's nine feet.
Nine feet, yeah. So we know what that one's about. You're looking for a variance for one building per lot. But the way you're gonna do this, you're gonna take down the, the grow house, what do you call it? The hoop building, whatever. And you're going to connect the two buildings that exist into one building. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, so when you connect it into the one building, do, does the building meet the amount of land that you're allowed to cover?
Yeah, so we would, we, we're only proposing to build, and this is, you know, this is pending much engineering and so forth, on the 10% allotted of the watershed. And all built out, it would be under the 50,000 square feet required, cap in commercial, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, so, so that's, that's what he's asking us to consolidate those buildings. I guess that's your, your third thing you're looking for, right? It says, section 5.6, we permits only one building per lot. We are seeking relief to consider all the buildings as one building. So that's his, the third, the third thing you're looking from, for, from the ZDA. The fourth thing is, land included within all yard setback requirements shall be maintained as, in the case of commercial uses, landscape space. The side yard is set, the side yard setback is 30 feet. And the proposed parking is outside the 30-foot set off, but the driveway, some of the driveway is within that 30 feet. So you're asking for permission to keep the driveway where it is, correct?
That's right.
Around it?
Yep.
Okay, and then the fifth thing he's looking for is a loading area. Says he's, you're looking, proposing a single loading bay. And we're not sure what would actually be required, but that's what you're asking for. Because it isn't particularly useful to your business, will be used not very often, you say.
Correct.
Okay, so is there, that, so am I correctly summarized what you're looking for?
I, I believe so.
Okay, does anybody on the board want me to take any messages to the ZDA on behalf of our board?
Not at this time, not for myself, Madam Chair.
Anybody else?
This is John. I have no concerns with that either.
Phil?
No, I'm all set.
All right, I will go and represent us and I'll say we've at least considered everything he's, he's proposing. All right.
Madam Chair, and that's for the meeting that's on the 24th, was it?
I think it's Monday, isn't it, Mallory?
Yep.
Monday.
6:30?
I likely will also attend that meeting.
Yes, come. But if there's a third, you've got to, that wants to come. If anybody else wants to come, let Mallory know because she's got to post it by.
Like right now.
Alice, Alice, Bill Holman's, I'm on that board, so.
Oh, so you're gonna have to post it, Mallory.
Okay.
Will you do that for me?
Yeah.
Okay. A meeting to joint, attend a joint meeting. It's even, isn't even a joint meeting to attend. Three members, a quorum of the planning board will attend. I don't know, figure it out. But don't get us in trouble for posting. And I would love to have some help and somebody else come. Okay. Oh my gosh, I'm tired. All right, what else do we have to do? The 56 Dogwood Road North, this is something we need to sign. It's, it's, Dogwood Road is an old subdivision. And every owner that bought in the subdivision, you can see it in the records, had to sign a covenant with the town that they, that the roads would be, till the roads were put in and everything was done up to the standards in the subdivision, basically. Because I don't think they do this, this anyway, anymore. But anyway, every lot then, and this was like, how many years ago? Mallory, like 30 years ago? Anyway, every house that has changed hands since has had to seek a release from this covenant. Because it's a titled effect. And the lenders won't lend to the new buyer without it. But really, it was for the, it was for completion of the roads. And they have been completed and they have been accepted as public roads. And it's been released many times. So what we need to do is have everybody stop down, stop Monday, if you can do it, or Tuesday, and sign this release of covenant forms. You can read what you're signing. It's posted in the documents. But it is important because it's gonna hold up the house closing for these people if we don't sign it. And it doesn't appear that I can sign on behalf of the board. It's everybody's signature. So I don't think we need a vote to sign it. You just need to go in and sign it. And Mallory, send everybody a reminder, okay, when you're gonna be in and when they can stop in. New business, well, a new development is that there was an error, probably everybody's aware of it now, of the posting of positions. So as a result, instead of having, it was posted is there are two planning board positions open each for a term of five years, which is of course wrong because one's a fraction of a term. So town council ruled that we can't have a vote on two positions for five-year terms and it's too late to change it. So her solution, his solution, I guess it was, I don't remember her name, was that we would hold the vote on a five-year term and with a three-way race. Because all the nomination papers that were signed, the three sets of nominations papers specified the five-year term. So I don't think it's a particularly fair result, but it is what town councils ruled and that's where we stand on that. Another item of new business is MRPC has a grant opportunity and John Hume is, is, this deadline's the 27th. And it is for help in any planning issue you would like. And I want to throw it in because I think they're looking for applications and we're likely to get it for about $5,000 to help get that solar bylaw and the energy generating bylaw done. Does anybody object to that? I know we have Bill's help and if we don't get it, and probably even if we do get it, but I, I hate to see a grant opportunity go to waste. And this was one of the things specifically mentioned is something you could apply for was help with solar energy bylaws. So nobody objects? I'll do that on behalf of the board and submit it and we'll see if we can get it. I'll send you a copy of, if we, if we actually can get it done.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, you cut out there briefly, at least on my end. Did you say it was both for the solar and for the battery energy?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I want to put it together and see if they'll help us.
Absolutely, great.
Because I don't see, it's just too hard to get things done and Bill is so busy, right? So if we can get some money in, in a helper person to put it together, it would be very helpful.
Thank you.
I think we're finally done. No matters, we, we have invoices to pay for Bill.
There is one new one.
Can you just describe it, Mallory?
Oh, I got out of my.
Who is it for and how much was it for? And we'll take a vote.
Sure, yeah. Let me just get back into it. So I was posting that meeting. So it was one invoice for 1,000, oh my gosh, my eyes, $871.25.
Is that with or without the administrative fee added?
That's, well, we charge administrative fee. And then there was another one for $2,385 for 69 Gardner Road.
Okay, so one is for $1,871.25. That's for which?
Those are the outstanding ones that have been submitted to Kelly to pay. And those will get paid for this vendor warrant. We had already voted on those. And then there was one for 69 Gardner Road, $2,835.
That we should vote tonight, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I have a vote to approve a bill for Places Associates?
Madam Chair, this is Francis Steiger. Would like to make a motion that we, that we approve the, these invoices.
Madam Chair, Bill Holman's, I'll make that second.
Okay, so this is the, I guess the only one that really still needs approving is a sixty-nine, right, Mallory?
Yeah, and everything else is Gardner Road. Okay, so it's been moved in second and to approve playing, uh, paying Places Associates invoice for two thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars for the work on sixty-nine.
You still need to take a vote.
We do, I think, yes.
Yeah, we have to vote on it.
Yep, so that's, I'm just repeating the motion. So, lived all, yes?
Holman's, yes.
Steiger, yes.
Monroe, yes.
Malia, yes.
Okay, so we're good. Last thing, um, well, we also have to talk about next meeting, but I guess that's been decided. We're gonna meet on June third, right?
Correct.
But I did get a one phone call that was interesting. It's, it's listed on there. It was from the lawyer that represents the Marinelli. You know, the big, the huge gravel pit behind the town pit. And he asked, he would like to meet with me and the developer. I think he's talking about an E-meeting. So, I ca, and I didn't know about that. You know, I answer questions all the time when people call them up as chair of the planning board, but I've never actually sat down with a petitioner without my board and listened to a proposal. So, I called the ethics committee and said, can I even do this? And what they said is, I, I can do it. But I have to be willing to extend the same courtesy to anybody else that wants to pitch an idea to the planning board, right? So, I wrote this guy back, and I said, yes, I'd be willing to meet with you. It's on the twenty-seventh. But you have to initiate the link, and I will only listen to what you have to say, pretty much, to take back to the board. I can't give you any opinions, and, um, I'm gonna limit it to half an hour. So, if that's all right with everybody, I just, uh, object now, because if you don't want me to do that, I'll make him come and pitch it to the whole board in the first instance. But I think, I think it's a courtesy I'd probably extend to anybody is to at least hear what they wanna present. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Madam Chair, Bill Holman's, I think it's awesome that you'll take your time to do that for the board and the town.
Okay, all right. So, I just wanted to announce, I just wanted to tell you that. Anything else, Mallory?
Um, just that, as of the fifteenth of June, all meetings will, are to return in person. Um, and I am gonna be out of the office on the next Wednesday and Thursday.
Mallory, is there at all an option for a hybrid beyond the fifteenth, or are we strictly only going with in-person?
Right now, because the state of emergency is gonna be dropped on the fifteenth, that means all, um, open meeting law provisions for virtual meetings are dropped as well.
Gotcha.
So, right now, it's only in-person meetings. And, um, we're not sure if there's anything in the works to, to change that, but as of right now, that's how it stands.
Right now, Mallory's working on securing our six-thirty time on Thursdays, which is apparently a hot time, and we have competition. So, we might, she's also looking into the senior center and whether the other people are, maybe we can work out second and fourth and first and third, or anyway, more to, more to come on that. But we, so we should hold our third, our meeting on the third will just be virtual then, right, Mallory?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we need to let, um, Damon know that. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn unless anybody else has anything at this very late hour.
Madam Chair, this is Francis Steiger. I put a motion, uh, forth to the board for adjourn.
For a second?
Bill Holman's all second up.
Okay, lived all, yes?
Monroe, yes.
Bill Holman's eye.
Malia, I.